We'll call the regular planning commission meeting to order for October. Can we have a roll call, please?
Phillips, absent, Healy, here, Roberts, here, Hill, here, Hubbard, here, Hardy.
Here.
Looks like you are.
Okay, thank you. Next on the agenda, actually on the minutes from this, well, I know, actually, from the August meeting, sorry to not have a September. Minutes of the August 1st meeting, can we have someone move the minutes, please?
Also move.
Roberts.
Scott.
Healy, any changes, additions to the minutes? Being none, all in favor of the minutes as posted, say aye.
Aye.
Both? None, meaning minutes are approved. Next up, approval of the agenda, can we have someone move the agenda?
So move.
Roberts? Healy. Okay, any changes to the agenda? Not seen none, all in favor of the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Both? None, agenda is approved. All right, moving right on to our public hearings, we have two public hearings for tonight. Well, the first one, I'll ask the question, because we got the revised number on one of us that says November 7th. Monday, November 7th.
So, those are their comments that they submitted identifying that I have the wrong date on my.
Yes.
My review.
Right.
So it's today's date, October 6th, and they provided a small. How many, like, train, which is how I put it.
Oh, okay.
These are theirs, just keep it.
Okay, yeah, just a little bit, okay, some edits, but I got just a little bit confused by that, November 7th, thank you, okay, got it. So we're still going towards what the public hearing has scheduled tonight. So first, I believe we'll have a presentation from staff.
Yes.
Evening, everyone.
Well, do we want to have staff first, or are we going to go with the architect first? Sorry, no, no, that's okay, you're very anxious, we like that, but sorry, hold on one minute, you'll go right after staff, sir. Yep. Yep, and then you'll be able to hop right on after.
Okay, so Megan will start.
Okay.
Then Marcus, and then I'll clean it.
Perfect, thank you.
And then we'll hand it over to the applicant.
All right, thank you, Megan.
Hi, Megan Nassimian, I'm Carlyle Wortman Associates. I'll go over my review and hit highlights. It's in your packet, so the applicant's proposing a 2,398 square foot craft cocktail lounge and tasting room in the vacant suite 102 at 3126 Broad Street. And that's the former home, the entire building was the former home of Encore Theater, so it would need to orientate yourself. No food service other than free packaged foods is proposed, however, in the letter submitted by the business owner, the non-flexible seating style would allow the possibility of hosting special events, such as rehearsal dinners or corporate events. The suite is one of 10, one of three tenant areas in the building, the others include a pasta market and a dance studio. They're looking to have an outdoor seating area of 52 patrons, indoor seating for 98 patrons, a bar, restrooms, and an area that appears to be an office. The suite has direct access to Broad Street via the door, there's another door that provides access to the rear of the outdoor seating area. That outdoor seating area is visible from the public parking lot, and also adjacent to the north of the subject site, as well as south and east from single-family houses, which are adjacent, but those are not. Those front lawn doors. The hours are proposed to be public daily from 10:00 a.m. till 11:00 p.m. We are assuming that means seven days a week, would need further, we would hope the applicant provides some more clarification. I know that you got correspondence from them today, and we haven't had a chance to review that. The bars, tap and lounges are special land uses in the central business district, and that's what the site is zoned into. Tasting rooms interpreted to be similar to that use. Outdoor service areas are permitted uses in the C V D, subject to administrative approval in performance to certain regulations of the zoning ordinance. Also, since this is a reoccupation of an existing building, it's an administrative site plan review by staff. So the special land use is the only time that is coming to you will review. Somewhat similar to what we had before with Encore Theater moving up into the, what was Own Business District. Everything surrounding is zoned, central business district, the, also, everything is planned to be the downtown. However, there's, again, a lot of different uses around it, so it's a multi-tenant building, there's city-owned parking to the north, single-family to the south and east, and to the west, across the street is a multi-tenant building. In terms of the master plan, it's generally in compliance with the City of Dexter's master plan, meets the goals and objectives, and it's an appropriate use in the central business district. Since it's a reoccupation of an, of an existing building, natural resources and their protection really don't come into play. In terms of traffic impact, I think the engineer has talked more to that in their review. We did cite that there would be approximately 36 vehicle trips per day, but we wanted to note that although the applicant said the applicant will maybe limit it to 150 patrons, some of those people would likely be coming from D C neighborhoods, or maybe they're patronizing some other business in downtown Dexter and going there. In terms of parking and loading, since it's in the central business district, there are examples of the parking requirements. And they're proposing to use the loading area that's on the north side of the building. Trash removal is something that needs to be clarified, they indicated to staff that they would use the dumpster that's in the city's D C parking lot. A note simply needs to be added to the site plan to deal to. Codify that, for lack of a better word. In terms of essential facilities and services, we'll defer to the city engineer. A lot of our concerns, though, are about site access and circulation. There are certain existing conditions of the site. Number one, Broad Street is a one-way street with a single sidewalk that's on the opposite side of the street from this existing building. There's not a formal sidewalk on this side of the street. There's angled parking adjacent to the building, but when we were there for a site visit, there's not clear five-foot area, which is your standard to have pedestrian very free access, and when you have heavy pedestrian loads, it's recommended that that would be wider. And then it was unclear from the site plan whether it's showing existing or proposed bumper blocks, and it didn't seem to quite match up with what was on the ground, with what was on the plan. The door that directly accesses the space is in the middle of the building. So when people are accessing it from the front, they're going to have to cross the street, or they're going to have to come around that building in between where people are parking, where the cars are parked, and where the building are, building is. And so when it was occupied by the Encore Theater, they had all the building, and they used multiple entrances to get people in and out. And so this is a little different. It's just different circumstances. Also, we questioned whether that door facing Broad Street is very free accessible, and we think the engineer has some more insight into that. Finally, the screen space around, between the city-owned parking lot to the north and the proposed outdoor seating area, but it's a pretty steep slope. So our concern is that somebody is going to try and get down there to get to what's going on, unless there's some strong visual cues about where people, how people access the space and how people don't. Also, there's a door in the rear facade accessing the space that's proposed to be occupied. That doesn't have the same great changes in surfaces, it's wider than the front door. But that door's not easily seen from Broad Street or the city-owned parking lot, and it's not the shortest route possible from the nearby parking spaces. Also, we're concerned that the proposed use is to accommodate 150 patrons at full capacity. We're concerned that an event at that full capacity could create a hazardous pedestrian situation, unless improvements were made to the front of the site, and that the rear door will be used as a primary entrance, as well as the front door. Some things that we recommend that we can make can help with the site is to utilize, again, the front and the rear doors' primary entrances. Directional signs that can be posted or painted on the ground to guide patrons to that rear area and distinguish the loading area from the pedestrian area. Also, to move the bumper blocks back in the front, create a five-to-seven-foot barrier of free walkway on the existing surface. Also, to re-straight the area in front of the door in Broad Street to align with the concrete apron. Confirm and update the interface between the concrete apron and existing parking area, and also to use landscaping and that required, there's a required removable enclosure for outdoor seating if you're serving alcohol, to use that to designate proper entrances and routes to the proposed outdoor seating area and to the rear entrance to the indoor facility as well. We have a section of sidewalks, and basically that mirrors some of the concerns that I talked about just now. Also, in terms of landscaping, because this is a reoccupation of an existing building, the site doesn't have to be brought into compliance with all the landscaping regulations. However, the planning commission can require relevant provisions of Article 6, as well as considered landscaping that provides a better site design for compliance. There were a number of things that we recommended the planning commission require in the minimum. Number one, that a screen of fencing planters or shrubs is at more than edge of the paint area where the outdoor seating is proposed. Again, to give visual cues about where it should go and make it a more attractive space. Fencing to screen the residential use to the south of the overall property and protect the rear yard associated with the pasta market that's in Suite 101. We recommend a six-foot privacy fence with a gate, which may be locked. I think that, based on the fire chief's also review, he might have some thoughts about that as well, to separate the proposed outdoor seating area from the lawn area. Finally, there needs to be cleanup and maintenance plan for the green areas between the property line and the proposed city area. That's at a minimum. At a maximum, we think that this is a great place where plantings that are, like those lawn-Broad Street pedestrian path walkway between Dexter Bakery and 8009 Main Street, that type of landscaping can work well there, and then continued visual elements during the rest of the downtown. In terms of lighting, they have an LED wall pack lighting that's proposed, and those aren't allowed for the ordinance, so those will be need to be revised. We also recommend that the applicant and the property owner consider some other types of lighting that would add some sense of place, such as string lighting or decorative wall fences, and those, those, the string lights would be allowed in the outdoor service area per the regulations. In terms of floor plans and elevations, the applicant provided a complete set. There's a couple of things that are proposed, two new overhead doors in the rear to clean and prime and paint the portion of the facade, just the portion of the spot, ha-ha, that's associated with this use. And then to repair the concrete pad to the existing door, and then they have that new building-mounted lighting, which will need to be changed in terms of the type of fixture. We recommended in our review that the new paint be a contrasting color to the existing paint to create more of a sense of place, you've got long white wall there, and that's not create visual interest of anything that makes the site fade out and not be a part of, not be a part of the downtown. It could also be a great place for a mural. In terms of outdoor service areas, again, there are a number of regulations. The most important is that if they have alcohol, they need to rope off or define where the, where that is, the alcohol's being served and where people are being seated. So that at a minimum needs to be part of that, this, and we, as we recommend, we think that can be part of creating a really special place. We've also recommended that applicant consider adding one or more of the amenities that are allowed under that section of the zoning ordinance dealing with outdoor service areas, such as umbrellas or temporary shelters or decorative lights. If you go to the site, you'll see that it kind of goes down and fades away, just some pop of colors and pop of light, I think will bring that, could bring that place out and really make it a visual interest, a focal point, a nice little niche in the downtown that people will talk about, whereas right now, it's a place that kind of fades away. In terms of special land use standards, there's a number of them, and again, I'm going to hit the highlights. For the special land use has to, should be consistent with goals, objectives, and future land use plan in the master plan. And we think the site has the potential to contribute to the character and make sense of place in downtown, and just with a few changes to what's purported tonight. Also, it should meet the intent of the zoning district, which does because it's a use that is allowed, and then also it's bringing activity to the streets, to the downtown. Again, we feel that the design could be better to really address that standard of specialty use. Another item in terms of the standard is that it should be compatible with, not alter, the existing intended character of the general facility in terms of a number of impacts, and also that it should be in a location where the height of the buildings and the structures, location, measure of wall fences could not interfere or discourage the appropriate development and use of adjacent land uses or unreasonably affect their value. You've got two non-conforming houses that are right adjacent to this. And also, you could have the potential for a lot of people coming to this site, and that pedestrian access and circulation having an impact on the character of this part of downtown. You wouldn't necessarily overload Broad, Broad Street with pedestrian traffic if everybody's trying to get in just that one front door. And then also feel like that outdoor seating area without proper screening could negatively affect the food business, as well as the single-family homes in the south. In terms of, and one of those other standards is quality of natural features and the environment. Again, as we stated before, it's an existing building, so that's not the same concern as it would be elsewhere in, in the city. Standard is public facilities and services, again, we're defer to the city engineer. Another standard is whether the use is hazardous than is normal for the district involved. Taking into consideration pedestrian access and safety, vehicle trip generation, traffic, access location and design, circulation, parking design. And the standard says effort shall be made to ensure that multiple transportation nodes are safely and effectively accommodated or provide alternate modes of access and alleviating vehicle traffic congestion. And so, as we stated, I think there are a number of things that can be done in order to help make sure that this doesn't have a negative impact on pedestrian circulation. Finally, standard is that proposed use to be designed, located, and planned to operate to protect the public health, safety, and welfare. As it's proposed, the use might inhibit the protection of health, public health, safety, and welfare. And one of the things to think about is the time of activities and the duration of activities, especially outdoor activities. So the planning commission, as part of your review, would have the ability to place time limits on outdoor activity in the outdoor seating area, or also you could restrict certain activities, such as library and So there are, there's a lot of view for you to look at tonight, and I know that the engineer and applicant have some things to bring forward to you and also for, for you to look at. But when you are debating this, what we recommend you really look at is, is the design of the site, particularly the outdoor seating area, does that meet that special land use criteria? Will the use and design is proposed make that pedestrian traffic no more hazardous than is normal in the C V D? And think about other areas that are just as, there's a few other areas that are just as tight as Broad Street. The Broad Street's a little unique there, and it's a one-way street with only that one sidewalk on the other side. Also, to look at whether the proposed design in T C room or the outdoor seating area, including landscaping, will not unreasonably affect the value of those adjacent plans or buildings. Again, it's a pretty unique situation where you have two non-conforming single-family homes next door to this use, which is throughout the central business district, but this is a point where that one site bumps up to those other two, the two single-family residential. And finally, the proposed hours of operation and landscaping for the T C room and outdoor seating inhibit the protection of health, safety, and welfare.
Okay, thank you, Megan. We will probably come back to you for questions. Thank you. Nick Marcus, you want to go next?
Sure. We agree with everything Megan said. As she mentioned, it's an existing building, so the impact on the overall environment is really minimal to re-occupancy, so it did not new and previous services, you know, existing building with existing utilities. So we didn't have any concerns there. The impact on the public facilities. Megan mentioned the combination vehicle, pedestrian, traffic in the area that is a narrow corridor. I haven't done the foreview, but I know that it's already started to address some of those issues or concerns. So we think they're solvable, it's just a matter of having much to clarify. No parking areas, looking at the whole site, the functionality of the site and the circulation. So we share a little bit of concern, and that does need to be addressed. One question that we had, wasn't mentioned yet, is it doesn't appear from the blueprints that there really a commercial kitchen proposed, and they specifically said there won't be food preparation in their narrative. Or question, I guess, that we had is if there are going to be large events that presumably then would be catered, potentially, how would the thing up from that go, you know, you know, be disposable with their plates, in other words, where they're wouldn't need to be washed, that would require some plumbing improvements, including a grease separator. So we're asking for clarification here. I have the same question about garbage disposal. And I think that can just start to clarify that. As far as the traffic impact, because it is in C V D district, there's specific parking requirements that they find on their site. So given the nature of this use, it's really just a matter of making sure that there is clear, defined, accessible route to the building, so that patrons, you know, can use the other existing car in here. We had a couple of comments similar to Megan's about defining the outdoor space, so that you don't have basically crosslot pedestrians, either in the ski areas or trespassing. So we had the same suggestion, the fancy landscape area, or plan a box of something beyond what the mission requires as far as defining space, but there's probably things that can be above the minimum requirement there that would really help separate outdoor space from neighborhood traffic. And that is all I have.
Great, thank you, Marcus.
Michelle. Okay, so I'm going to briefly go over the D A F D review. One of the primary concerns for D A F D was the existing suite next to the proposed tasting room does have a needs-of-beagreast door that will require an exit pathway through the proposed outdoor seating area. So that pathway needs to be at least the width of the doorway, and it can't be obstructed. So there may need to be some minor tweaks to where they put their barrier to their alcohol area in order to make sure that there is basically a five-foot wide walkway along the building in order to get back out to Broad Street. So for my, for my review, you've got, you have that special land use application from the applicant, their site plan, both the Carlyle Wortman, the O H M, and the D A F D reviews, in addition to what you have for me. They also have provided written response comments and a marked-up site plan to correspond with that, that was submitted this afternoon. It's provided in a hard copy in front of you, and it was posted to the website as additional documentation for tonight's meeting. I had briefly gone over it, but I have not studied it. So we'll have to read and listen and review with the applicant when they present it. What I'm going to do is I'm going to, instead of regurgitating what Marcus and Megan have said, is start with the conclusions based on the special land use criteria, and then talk about recommended motion review. Excuse me, or the actions of the motion. The conclusions are pretty clear. If they're not meeting or satisfying the criteria based on what they presented, they could, with some, some attention to the comments made by Megan and by Marcus. So the proposed cocktail lounge and tasting room generally is compatible with the master plan. However, the use of lighting, landscaping, vertical elements like the umbrellas in an outdoor service area, and contrasting color as far as on the wall, either in, even the improvements to the rear facade or proposed furniture could enhance the visitor experience and provide a focal point in downtown. And that is something that's envisioned in the master plan. It's complementary to the downtown, it could be compatible to the zoning ordinance, subject to the administrative review and approval of the outdoor service area in accordance with Section 3.31 of the ordinance. It could be compatible with the existing and intended character of the surrounding area, provided the applicant addresses concerns regarding both the existing front and rear doors functioning as primary entrances. We do know that it will not, it will not negatively impact the natural environment, and that seems like a double negative. It won't impact the natural environment negatively. Is, it is adequately served by public services, however, to ensure that that oil and grease do not enter the city sanitary sewer system for any food that's prepared off-site and served during special events. A fog control system, that's that oil respirator, must be installed and clarification provided regarding the refuse disposal. The use could provide safe vehicular and pedestrian access and circulation, subject to the following. Utilization of both the front and the rear doors, doors as primary entrances to the space. Directional signs posted or painted on the ground would be needed to guide patrons to the rear entrance and distinguish the loading areas on the pedestrian walkway. Move the bumper blocks to create a five-to-seven-foot barrier, five-foot wide barrier, barrier-free walkway on the existing surface between the cars and the building base. If the spaces are at least 20 feet in depth, those spaces will need to be signed for cars only, trucks will hang out into Broad Street. Also, all active parking spaces must have bumper blocks, and areas not used for parking must be striped as such. If the bumper blocks are to be removed from their current locations and the spaces re-straight, a note to that extent needed to be, needs to be added to the site plan. Restriking the front air, the front of the door on Broad Street in order a lot to align with the concrete apron at the entrance to Unit 201 is, is necessary. Confirmation or update of the interface between Confirmation or update that the interface between the concrete apron and the existing parking area is very great. That probably is going to require an engineered topographic plan for that area, not necessarily the entire site, but any area where ADA compliance needs to be identified. Use landscaping and required removable enclosure for the outdoor service area to designate proper entrances and routes to the outdoor service area and rear entrance. And then provide that undisrupted pathway from suite 101 through the proposed outdoor area and then back out to Broad Street. The last thing, it could protect the public health, safety and welfare so long as the restrictions on certain activities associated with the outdoor area, such as hours of operation, amplified music are restricted and those improvements to the design of the outdoor service area are provided. You have a recommended motion, or not a recommended, it's a motion that incorporates the, the conclusions into, into a motion. If that is how you propose to proceed, there's also most house phone if you're not ready to take action. If you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer them. Otherwise, we'll bring up the answer.
We may have some questions for you, but I think at this time we can have the applicant do his presentation. Please, 10 minutes, corrector, Michelle was at five.
It's 10, but if they need more.
Okay, yes.
Because they do have some responses that never.
Okay.
I want to make sure that you're making clear on what those responses are. Plus, we need to be as far.
Yeah, okay, makes sense. Officially, good evening. Yes. For those who didn't, that's my name, the architect and designer of the floor of the space, year 2026, Broad. And I have with me as well, Christian Lord, who's the CEO of High Line Spirits. As well as owner for the space and brings you here to share what my details for Michelle.
If you want to share your screen, this is what you should be able to.
I'll say the host is a disabled participant. Thank you. And as Michelle had mentioned, we did submit a list of responses to the comments from Megan and Marcus. That was this afternoon, it was kind of responding some Friday as well. So apologies for having that in the hands and front view a little bit sooner, but it should answer the vast majority of the items that were raised in the reports as well as some of the recommendations versus the action. So if I may, for those who can see on Zoom and for those who may be joining us remotely, I, I'm showing the area of three months, this is Broad Street, Dexter, it was like a good visual satellite view of where we're and we're proposing that the suite, the build project, which is High Line Spirits. High Line Spirits is the maker of arctic crack spirits, is a cocktail lounge and tasting room. The distillation of the spirits is occurring outside. There will be no food preparation onsite, there's no FOG issues here. The only thing that would be offered would be a little bag of steak and nuts for reasons, there is something that you could have tasting, the distilled spirits and any refuse from that or any other temporary vessels would be disposed of. And that refuse plan would be to use the dumpster just north of the site, of the city parking lot. That is the main plan for all of our general use refuse as well as if there are plans for hosting an event by a show of corporate event, what that may be. That would be contracted, the refuse would be contracted as part of the options of the food and any enclosures that they would have temporarily on the site, the refuse would be contracted with that. Any supplemental refuse would also go to that same dumpster. So we're not planning on having any food disposal in the building nor down the grand, the San Diego tracks. The, the seasonal exterior nonfix seating for the tastings will be hosted. It's on an existing east pavated area behind the current site and the seating has already been factored into the final maximum occupancy load of 150 persons. So we're some 10 employees on the inside or inside and out, another 88 interior account and then 52 exterior as shown on the seating plan. The adjacent suite tenants, the dancing shop to the north and Carisello Pasta to the south, they operate a different operation at times compared to our proposed and requested 10:00 to 11:00 p.m. seven-day operation. The targeted clientele for High Line Spirits consists of the fine enthusiasts of high-end spirits. And in addition to the standard operation, the nonflexible seating outside would allow for hosting special events before. As was noted in Village of Dexter's vision and workshop, every business in the downtown could benefit from having a healthy business next door. The Broad Street area is marked as priority three, it's a viable destination within easy five-minute walking distance from the downtown core. And as Michelle had mentioned, it also has the direct sightline from the downtown strip through the parking lot. You can see the back seating area that we're proposing exterior seating and we did that shortly. Following the extra zoning permits, it is CBD, its own CBD as are the two adjacent residential areas of the East Team South. That was mentioned previously. We are proposing an occupancy load of 150 persons, but that's designed as rather than a drop for footage. What I'd like to do is go through just some response, I think that would be the most efficient way to go through what was asked from Carlisle Wharton and OHM and try to answer them. I don't know if you usually have an open floor for questions while I'm listing those. If not, we can save it again. I'm open for either.
You'll probably save it to the end. So if you go through your presentation and we'll, and then you with some questions after.
Okay, very good. So the first, the first question was based on reference disposal. I spoke to that earlier. I submitted a, an updated C101 site plan, which reflects the intended reference disposal to the north in the existing as for the normal operation and supplemental for any contracted posting of that contracted reference. The next issue was the clarification needed for large event logistics regarding how food was also disposed. How would you reach the area of nonfix seating? So the same sheet, C101, has been updated to reflect not only the reference disposal plan of any posted events, but also pathways have been added to show the six-foot pedestrian pathway to the back, which is going to be a supplemental primary. The main west entrance, that is your primary accessible entrance. The double doors on the east side, that's your secondary entrance as well, is not accessible. Step down into the suite, but it still has the required egress width times two and it does lead directly out into the site with a six-foot pathway directly to the rental. I'm going to briefly talk about the suite to the south, which is the pasta shop. And they have two entrances. Their main entrance is also on the west side where ours is. And on the east side is the owner-only back house entrance, I said. But it's also going to be an egress pathway. So there's an existing sidewalk with accessible widths that is going to the open area of seating. The site plan has been denoted to show that six-foot pathway reach also that sidewalk area of pasta shops. So they may also egress through the accessible pathway. Other changes have also been put on the site plan that have addressed and better reflected not only the dumpster location, but existing parking space locations compared to strapping spaces, existing fence locations between the residential zone area to the east and our proposed space. And there have also been a decent amount of dimensions put onto the same site plan and some of those that I can call out if you're looking at the plan itself. We've boldened not only the flat line dimensions, but also the dimensions on the exterior outdoor seating area. You can see this whole feed, etc. The tables that we initially proposed and that might be part of the initial site plan or updated, be lovely idea using some trouble outside as well. Whether some do, some don't, all of them do. I think that's a great way to do it. Also, the use of colors, various colors of those umbrellas could also not only resonate the feeling of High Line Spirits, but I think that would be a nice draw from the town as well visually. Other items that were noted on the site plan included the zone callouts of the adjacent areas. The secondary entrance to primary entrances were initially called out. We added the elevations along the top graphic lines. We also noted the existing stone landscape that is surrounding, is surrounding the exterior seating area. If you go there currently, it is rather a little run, a very good zone and it's covered a lot of grease. There's actually a slight river stone around that area. We plan to maintain that river stone surrounding and any future plantings, I think the intent is to keep the river stones surrounding landscape. And we are, we have updated the site plan to provide removable enclosures for outdoor service area access people. The images that you know kind of are intent for that removal partition is shown actually in the eight and a half by 11 response list going through right now. There are images in the back. Image one and two show all of those stanchions, it'll last though their stanchion systems in order to see other bars and patterns. That would be the best unit guide. It will most likely be the standard brass pipe in color, etc. For those board areas that are being opened and pulled out now by Megan and Marcus and Michelle. And that north area, where there is about 10 and 12, slope for about a three to four-foot gap in the parking lot down to our exterior seating space. The good thing about these stanchions that they can have, please walk around in letters, they can also be color-coded. So people have a very visible demarcation of where is, what is the control space and how we can get to the area that employees will have ready and waiting for any client. Just below those two images are also the, the combined concept niche of looking at products. So it's a pretty straightforward rendition of what our goals are. The final comment number three by Bruce's question, clients report. Comment number three, that much verified, it's a concrete path, the opposite areas of the condition of a client. We can confirm the existing path is in good shape and is compliant for the ADA, a testable pathway correctly adjacent to the building as we have in our site plan. We plan general notes along with any added dimensions also in that compliance. The next breakout is going to be in the Carlisle Wharton Associates' report, a recommended action comment for one, the clarification days a week. We do plan your, your request in the 10:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. timeline, seven days a week. The notes have already been added, the site plan as those, you know, in the OHM comments about the shared dumpster, the city parking lot. The clarification that's to the bumper block location. The dimensions were added of a few of the bumpers that you surveyed a few days ago that actually have been relocated, also by an older owner. But some are in the location that are shown in the site plan at 41 inches. The others were denoted five foot two, so now they're a very 41 inches, five foot two. So they do not have a five foot width between the building and the bumpers. However, we do have the accessible, clear path or front approach at the main accessible west entrance, which is within that existing striped area between the parking spaces. And as was noted before, there is no sidewalk on the outside of the street, it's the diagonal parking, the sidewalks on the other side of the street. The lighting plan, being compliant with section 3.19 has been addressed by a red line, an updated document on sheet A301, that's the exterior elevation. That is noting that before, as I said, all that lights has been updated to a new exterior LED light fixture associated with power, which should be compliant with the municipal zoning code 319, which means 25-foot tanks max, non-flare, color corrected with adjacent residential areas, all works to lighting. I know that right now it's not in any of our plans, but there, there has been discussions about some more decorative, let's say a tanning. All lighting being strong over the top of those seating areas. That's a fantastic recommendation and really has budget allowance. Love to have that executed as part of our bill, but we can see how that goes forward. That is fantastic recommendation. The removal enclosure, we just spoke about the dimensions around the site plan as well and the images are in the report. There was recommended, the recommended consideration of the two, which was adding screen of the outdoor seating area in the adjacent parking lot. That will also be the same fan style of the stanchions that were last there, stretching borders, which are comparable. There was a recommended consideration, a review that was to add landscaping to the existing green spaces. Again, that is an existing stone landscaping plan as part of the existing building. We will maintain that. The area to the south, that is behind the pasta suite, will be subsequently maintained as well. The border that was recommended, the removal enclosure that was recommended at the sidewalk going towards the pasta shops, owner-only egress door was shown on site plan. It is, again, it's operable, it's removable. There's the question that comes up of during egress situation, they would obviously want to follow that pathway. We can discuss if there needs to be some kind of an alternate pathway around that, or still has control. Or because it's a removal partition, it would be removal enclosure, that removal enclosure location can be adjusted as we see fit to make sure that no one goes into the adjacent suite, but they still have the two more. Recognized consideration for five is to change the proposed paint on the rear side with contrasting color or a yellow. Both fantastic ideas. We actually had increased the area of paint from just the suite, it's all the same flat side. Instead of just putting on the suite, you are patients, you're planning, working with the landlord. Some of the scope is being done by the landlord and some of that scope is being done as part of our project. Or an accent color, it would be toned down, muted, down green. We haven't got that yet, which is TBD. But we're completely in the line of having an accent color to bring more visual sightline to the space. And it could also help the umbrellas stand out as well. Maybe like the green would go well, some of the dusty blues, again, it's TBD, but we do plan to incorporate it on sheet 301. And finally, the recommended consideration for six, which is adding a different thing to the much, you said umbrellas and we're shelters right now, we're focusing on the umbrellas. We do plan on putting umbrellas next to the seating that will be operable by the employees and all of the seating will be nonfix. And the images are in that same order. And rather than go into a bunch of details, as I was scribbling them down, trying to directly answer comments from Carlisle Wharton or OHM or anyone, commissioners, student representatives. If there are questions, hope we can field them out.
Also have three questions right now, or we may, typically we will probably have our public hearing now and then we will definitely call you back for additional questions after.
Thank you.
Okay, so at this time, we will open it up for the public to speak at seven fifty four. Everybody to speak to the uh the disllation tasting room land use, special land use approval, either online, hit star. Always forget. I should know by now, six, to raise your hand online. Six nine. Oh yeah, sorry, sir. If you're on the phone, that's right. Okay, raise your hand if you're online. Um otherwise, if anybody here would like to speak to this issue, please step forward. Uh if if you do want to speak to this issue, can you step forward, please, and state your name and address?
Yeah, that's good. My name is Chris Carroll. Lived in Dexter for thirty five years. I was registered here at U of M for thirty six years, fourteen of which were in trauma burn. My question is, does the sheriff department know or are they aware that there will be an increase of impaired drivers? Because there will be alcohol served, there will be an increase in impaired drivers. I don't, I've never experienced anything like this as the sheriff's department. Are they aware of what's changing?
Staff can put, I don't know if they're gonna put the part, the address as well, okay.
My address, three, four, one, six, central.
Don't, um well, we, we can't respond directly to you right now. Okay, as far as the sheriff's notification, thank you. Anybody else that would like to speak to this issue in public? If not, is there anybody on Zoom? On Zoom. Seeing no one else, we will close the public hearing at seven fifty six. And now we are in for a finding commission discussion. We have, as was mentioned by Michelle. We have our uh recommended motions on our page uh twelve. We actually think, well, conclusions start page eleven. And then recommend, recommended motion starts on page twelve of our packet. Um a lot of items, some of which were covered by the district at this time, but um somebody would like to make a motion, we can have some discussion, additional questions for staff as well as the consultant.
I'll move that the project meets the requirements set forth in article eight and recommends approval, but I. I'll say at the beginning, subject to all of the conditions laid out in the memo, but I want to have discussion of the plan and condition and I want to be clear that. Um adaptable based on. The comments received.
Based on our discussion. Okay, um so there is a motion carding. Is there support? What, Robins? Okay, so now we are in discussion. Questions for staff, uh Tishner?
Well, I'll start. Michelle, would you like to address the, what the question that's brought up in public comment? About what, what our obligations are to the sheriff's department and in that regard, if any?
So when the, the sheriff's department will be informed because it's got to go through a liquor license um permitting process. It's not a city liquor license that they would be getting. It is one that comes directly through Lara because the craft um cocktail beer wine industry has their own licensing. Uh process, but it still includes the local unit as well as the sheriff's office, so.
So just to be clear, my understanding was that someone does that work, but it's Lara, not the city.
Correct, but the city can make sure to follow up with the sheriff's office on the business.
I just wondered if the applicant had considered making the secondary entrance the primary entrance. Because it, you know, there, it is a real squeeze, I think. Space between where the cars are parked, the bumpers. Even though there is that, you know, straight access area of like. And it seems to me it could be more like along the lines of copies where there is back end and people do come in. But the primary entrance, you know, faces on Main Street. And seemingly there's, there's considerable space to funnel, you know, direct people, you know, on the, I, I have such a hard time with directions. I think that's the north side. And then, you know, kind of round the building and come in.
Um we spoke of, of in those accessible entrances and we will direct people to the back. But there is a considerable difference inside from outside as to the slope.
At the back.
At the back. And so we would have to ultimately break the entire patio and recruit it. Um and so that would be a huge project. Um we are hopeful to be able to make that accessible, but it would be the primary entrance for our wheelchair users and patrons.
Well, since we're, oh, there you go. I'm sorry. No, okay. Let me get a couple. I've got a couple observations more than um. More than questions, all of them. One of them is a question relative to um Carlisle Wharton's report. And that has to do with the parking spaces being signed for cars only. And I understand that, but there are many cars in this world that are just as big as trucks. And many trucks in this world that are smaller than cars. So it's to me, it, um. I understand what the point is there. I, I, I don't know how effective that would actually be or how it would be monitored. To me, I've got a couple things, but one of them that I have that's right in front of me right now, it's this street. This street, this section of street would be perfect. For a, for a one off, one of, I mean, it. If, if the whole street was open to pedestrians and bikes and cars, um that, that could use it. Uh ea- ea- easily and evenly. It's, it just would make, that makes the most sense. I don't worry about where the sidewalks are or, or how far the cars project out in it. It's just a multi-use space that's safe for everybody. To me, it's perfect and I'm, I'm only making as a comment.
So the D D A will be updating their strategic plan and comments like that are things that I can take back to them as part of the process that they look at.
And also my last, my question is, once again, with the building itself and the garage doors, they're just going to be conventional garage doors?
No, they're gonna be great.
They're going to be segmented with some glazing. It's going to be during the warmer months. Um they segment up. They come inside, so you can still see outside, enjoy the exterior views during the fall and winter times, but in the beautiful spring and summer days, I'll roll them up.
Okay, that's basically my question. I was wondering glass, but that's the answer.
Have you had any contact with or discussions with the single family homeowners that are behind the patio?
I did attempt to make contact, but I haven't reached them yet. So I went in that other doors, but they weren't available when I stopped. But I will continue to do so.
We often get feedback of someone proposed and we didn't get any feedback. I was just curious.
Along with mine, but I do have concerns about how many people are proposed to be on that back patio. Given how small that area really is and how close it is to those not performing homes. Um for example, when, I don't know if you guys are familiar with cultivating and it's landing. When they put in their outdoor area, they've got constant complaints from the neighbors. So we might want to look at limiting those hours or reducing that capacity or both. Because it's just, I mean, it's not like an outdoor service area downtown. I mean, like the beer grater service area or the pub, that's not right against someone's house. So I just want to make sure that we're respectful of the neighbors when we think what we're approving here and not approving.
It's along with the same lines, very planning for music.
If we are, it would be within the city requirements of, of the decibel limits that are already set in D D A.
So that could be something that was a, a question that I heard, something I was tossing in my mind was regarding the out that noise and speakers outside. Um that, I mean, I think that has obviously significant annoying the surrounding. Um I'm struggling with that concept, however, because it next to them, it is zone C B, you know, so it is, it is ultimately going to be a commercial store. Well, it may or may not be. So we could have a similar type of use there. So I'm struggling, although I want to be respectful of that. I think outdoor noise. Now, in general, that's one thing that we do as a commission. If we are concerned, we can put those limitations within this as a special land use, so. Um so correct me, I'm sorry, or not correct me, but clarify, did you say you're going to have speakers outside or just inside with the music that can flow on it?
We currently have speakers inside. If we were to have speakers outside, it would be contained within the decibel level that was required to keep us under. I think it's sixty decibels, which is basically speaking level. No, it's not loud.
So it's more like.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
Good, good analysis. Okay.
We, we are, are, I'm also a resident here and I am abundantly aware of the aesthetic and also the impact on my neighbors. So I am aware of that as well.
All right, so we have.
Just a quick aside, I, I really, I'm glad that you brought that up. And then you got another one right there. It's worth discussing.
Oh yeah, I think so. Definitely. Michelle had made that note to forward to the D D A, I think. Because normally I'm very sensitive and keen to the pedestrian issues and safety is regarding that, but this street is different. Um it, it is different. I mean, the one-way nature of it, it's smaller. It, it's right. It's perfect for that. Like, I always wish you could get rid of that parking. You'd have the seating on that side of that, you know, and, and I guess technically it's possible, I guess, because it's not public parking, right? I mean, that's, that's private property. So um oh wait, one other question I was to that point quickly. How wide is that right of way? It's pretty narrow, is it not? I mean, that's.
The actual drive through this or the right of way?
The right of way.
So Broad Street right of way is a, is um twenty five feet, but I don't remember exactly what the width is there. I know as you get down like thirty, forty five broad, it's only twenty five feet wide for the right of way. So the sidewalk on the dancer's edge side of property where the trees are and the. That's part of the public right of way. So it, it, there is a little bit of room there.
Okay, yeah.
But it doesn't go all the way to the building. So.
Interesting. Um okay, Jim, some questions?
If I understand correctly, they don't. Am I correct?
That's correct. Okay. Little bit of food crap or, or disposal.
Right. Michelle?
So the, the engineer and specifically, it was requested that he could do. Um even though there is no food crap, there's, do they have to make sure that um there is no fat grease oil that gets washed down? To the storm or into the stain here somewhere. D P W is the.
Okay.
Okay.
Um. Does anyone think we shouldn't pass this motion subject to all of the conditions laid out in the draft?
The um, well, I'll answer that specifically, but I do think there's been an awful lot of revisions made. And it seems as if most things have been addressed, but I do know, or I think engineer and planner have not had an opportunity to review them. To confirm that they do in fact respond to all the questions. So that makes me hesitant a bit.
The staff have any concerns more about?
If the motions were, if you were to make an affirmative motion or if you were to vote based on the motion you made where all these conditions are part of it. It ensures that all of the concerns that have been addressed by staff and consultants have to. And as we're looking through their revised materials and taking the deep dive into it, those that are, get checked off. If there's more information that's needed, we look administratively with them. But at least you've set the foundation based on the reviews that were committed.
Yeah.
All right, so based on the following, based on the information presented, um well, I don't have to do it again.
No.
No, you don't. You may want to make sure that there aren't any other questions the applicant has for you that you would have for the applicant.
We don't usually do applicants questions at this stage.
But we didn't do the applicant in, according to the public hearing, after the public hearing.
Oh, response.
He and response. There were a lot of comments, so I'm just ensuring that.
I know. Okay, the applicant doesn't get to ask also, since that was more my.
Okay.
Yeah, correct. If there's anything.
Unless it's a question for clarifying about your motion.
Look, I, I just have one uh question. Oh, Megan's behind the screen. On your, um, sorry, I had it. Over the landscaping question, um that you. I was interested in you said about. To the pedestrian walkway in between the bake uh and bakery and that. But were, so were you suggesting then removal of all that parking in that area to add trees in that area?
No, there's a two foot area and then not, but if you go down the, it's the, really the landscape that's adjacent to the. To the walkway, which is Hasta and some other little line perennials, um which. Um could possibly work in that area. However, what the applicant has stated that they would maintain it and that there, it's the stone landscaping that's there. Um but that's fine.
Yeah, no, no, and I appreciate that comment. So I was, again, usually on the landscaping issues, this is tough, but I've walked. I, that is such a, it's crowded area and.
Yeah, it's, and you only.
It's next to a fence, so, yeah, but.
So let's frame it a little bit. Are you comfortable with the retaining that area that it just staying rock? Or do you feel that it needs to have more, some type of additional landscape treatment?
No, I, I think firstly, I think I'm, I'm, I am comfortable with the rock. Usually I like more landscaping, but again, to this effect, I think that. It's in the petition or the applicant's best interest to make. I, I don't want to necessarily, like, again, I think I would prefer some landscaping in there, but. I don't know exactly what, but I think it's in, in your best interest to make it look as nice as possible. And it's all like, you know, landscape's soft. You know, it can, I mean, we want to bring this, make it a cozy space. So again, same with the accent lighting. That's something I think would help, but I wouldn't make it a requirement necessarily because I think that's something you probably would be interested in doing anyway if, you know, budget and things like that allow. So, okay, thank, thank you, Megan. I just wanted to kind of clarify that, that question for that comment. Um and I'm sorry, I think I have one more noted here that I want to make sure. Okay, um Chuck, you can go first, please, and then I'll.
Um the, there's been discussion, of course, in placement of the part of bumper blocks, the parking block. I think in my experience that it might be better to make those bumper blocks perpendicular to, or uh. You know, perpendicular to the parking space rather than parallel to the sidewalk. And one of the reasons is it's easier for people to understand where the parking spaces are. And secondly, when there's snow or when they, when the lines are disappear over time. You wouldn't, no one would have the tendency to just pull straight into those spaces. Um so uh you can follow what I'm saying, the one corner of the parking lot, parking block. You were, it is right now, but instead of parallel to the sidewalk, it's meshed.
Wouldn't they have the, they only have a section of the building and those parking spaces run the length.
Correct. I mean, it would have to be done through the length of the building.
Agree.
And I know that that becomes more problematic for snow removal. It's easy to push a plow right straight down through there, but at the same time, I think it's less confusing to me.
I think, I think we've had a similar issue once before and raised the question of. Remember, they don't own the property, they don't lease it. And I think we were wondering, could we even make something like that a condition? It's a good question, and I don't, we haven't got an answer.
I think so. There's the proper. Access as, as the sidewalk between the parking and the building. Um, you do have the wherewithal to require. Changes to the parking block.
Require the landlord to change.
Correct, because remember the landlord is also on his permission. He had to sign it because he owns the property.
Right, okay. And so you, I, I think that's a pretty good suggestion, but be interested if others think so.
I don't think.
Okay. Other, other, other comments, thoughts on that one?
I don't see that. I don't see a whole bag or either. I mean, I get your point, but.
Okay, okay, you agree. Okay, um, so at this, does the applicant, do you have any responses for us? That, anything that we've said that, or not, I mean, we haven't necessarily posed any questions to you directly, other than the ones we've answered as a commission, but.
Two questions, uh, related to the motion, fully. Um, if the motion to approve. All recommendations would be the required recommendations per reports. Not include any considerations or other recommendations, where only the required actions. Uh, as part of the motion, and I guess in response then to the rotation of. Any curves being a part of the landlord's requirements, uh, would that be? Would that be something that would be required directly to the landlord? Again, I'm trying to just understand.
That's not a motion, that's not a motion. Correct, that's not enough. So no, I appreciate that comment, but as kind of we just discussed, it doesn't seem like there's, I mean, myself and another commissioner, but. It seems like there's overall support for that, so that would not be in the motion. And then to answer your question, although we typically don't answer questions, but the motion that. Um, it was proposed, it's just the requirements. Again, that's going down that list of requirements that has to be addressed, those concerns noted in the. Um, in our staff and consultants report.
See.
Okay, so that's one thing that I, I didn't want to verify, Jim, if we did have to make some. Other additional determinations on it, or if it was. I don't. Discuss. Um, so. Yes, if we, obviously, if you're asserting, yes, a particular, yeah. Well, the hours of, I mean, again, we're comfortable with the ten to eleven. Which is fine, okay, that's what they proposed. Is, oh, one question I want to ask you, Michelle. That's done nearly for the outdoor seating, correct? So if, and I know I've asked you this before, like for things like the Audrey, so if there is a problem. Is that something, now we've given them, given them approval through special land use to include that, but if there's a problem.
Your, what you're doing as part of the special land use is the tasting room. You're not specially using the outdoor seating area, but because it's part of what's being proposed, you're looking at it in a comprehensive way. Um, in regards to the motion for number six. Um, um, I think if I just heard you all say. Um, you're okay with the hours of operation that they proposed, then you'd want to modify that particular. Um. Uh, condition, because it says shall be restricted based on recommendation. You're not restricting it. Um, but you, but it does sound like, um, as far as the music. You want to make sure that it doesn't go beyond sixty decibels at.
So that would actually be, I think, already covered by our current code.
Yes, our current rule doesn't have a number. Our current rule says that it's that general nuisance, um, um, noise can't be.
Yeah.
There are rules of thumb, um, excuse me. Establishing, um, a sixty decibel limit, um. Would be, would be, would be good to bake into your motion.
So I'll say this, I'm not comfortable with that, but if the majority of the planning commission is a modified motion.
That's, I mean, I would, I would think, I would be comfortable with that, but I'd be interested to hear. I think it's reasonable.
It's never measured though, right? That's, that's the problem I always.
Well, Karen's on top of it. This is exactly.
Yeah, what's, what's.
So I, we can measure the decibel. No, so, and, um. The ordinance doesn't have a number. So if I have to, if I have to go into code enforcement, um, a noise complaint. I either did the decibel meter from Carla Orman or use the, um, unofficial one that's downloaded on my phone. And then I go out and I take readings and then I use professional standards for, uh, for sound levels. Um, like somebody said earlier, a conversation is about sixty decibels. A vacuum cleaner is ninety. So if, if the music is at ninety, that's going to be loud in a way to be impactful in a negative way to the residents.
Whether we put that clause in or not, under our ordinance, you're still going to be able to.
I can, but.
More vague, cause she doesn't have a number. It's just like, it's. It causes a problem, it's a nuisance.
You're, you're just clarifying and providing a better structure. You're improving upon.
You're metric to say ban.
Yes.
But that's very good. I mean, so is there additional support? For adding that into there?
In other words, as recommended by the planning commission, will be, planning commission is recommended sixty decibels.
We would be holding.
Yeah, we would be holding up to that, right?
Oh, wait, wait, sorry, recommendation.
I mean, I struggle, we don't have that for the other land uses adjacent. Um. I mean, like the other, the deer grado doesn't have that or the.
Well, can we just say?
Can I pretend to be comfortable with saying a speech about imposing on business law?
Okay. Um, okay, so.
If you're not comfortable, leave it with what it.
Yep, exactly. So that's your motion. You don't have to change your motion. So.
Well, you do have to.
But I will.
Hours. You do have to take out the word.
Well, let's just strike six. Strike six. It's the original motion, striking recommendation six, if Karen agrees.
Yeah, if you give one of mine. Hours.
Yeah.
If we put this section out, it's gotta be, you have to post count.
Sorry, one, one, sorry, Michelle, one more question about that zoning permit. Is, is that a, so again, if this was, I knew since it was really loud out there and stuff, is that something where, again, you cannot issue the zoning board. A compliance thing the next year for the outdoor seating?
If we get complaints and there's not mitigating, if we get complaints, the biolink. Um, and there's no mitigation to resolve that.
To that.
Then yes.
Right, your first chance is to get it to resolve, which is in their best interest, of course, to.
Right.
Okay.
And I should say part of why I'm. So I asked about the neighbors, because I am a little concerned, but part of why I'm comfortable with this is because I think with the annual review process, we can. Police it if that's a concern.
Yeah, and, and, and again, I mean, it is zone C B D around it as well, so it's. Could in theory be a similar. Okay, I'm, I'm done with my questions. Any additional questions? So we do. Um, motions for support, basically as written here, addressing the staff comments before proceeding to the next, the next step.
What's striking point six?
Thank you, Karen. And, and did you?
Yeah.
Okay, additional questions, concerns? Okay, I think we're ready for a vote, please.
Marsh.
Yes.
Cardy.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
Healy.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Huber, yes. Kowalski.
Yes. Okay, she moves forward. Thank you. Um, okay, moving on. Our next public hearing tonight, uh, for the zoning ordinance update. Uh, so we will have a couple of presentations for this as well, I believe. I think Megan is going to lead it up, lead us off. Yes.
So this part is probably the longest part of the meeting.
Oh, good thinking. Thank you, Michelle. Let's take a five minute adjournment. It's like you. We'll be back, we'll be back, plus three adjourn. At eight twenty eight, perfect. Yeah, from the last week. Okay, so, um, now we're here for this, yeah, sorry, the public hearing for the zoning ordinance. So at this time, I believe Megan's going first, correct?
Yes.
Do you have a, a little presentation?
Yes.
Okay, alright, perfect. We have copies of that within our package, so.
You have it in your packet, um, if both of you are here, uh, the, the PowerPoint here, I apologize for the small screen. It's not in your usual place. Um, so, um, if you can order it, please. Um, we're going to quickly go over the process, um. What's the building ordinance plan through the perfect, and actually, the zoning ordinance and subdivision ordinance, the purpose of the ordinance rewrite. Um, how those proposed changes, um. For Dexter, um, and recommended changes based on the input we had last month. Um, and I want to start off by saying thank you to everyone who participated. You have extraordinary patience, um, bravery and kindness also in really trying circumstances. Um, and, um, hopefully we'll also vary the public hearing since it is for you to continue to share your concerns and recommendations with the planning commission. Recommended changes again based on the input, um, and then the purpose of the public hearing and the next steps, um, for the ordinance. Next slide. Um, so this is the process that we've been going through, um, since twenty twenty one, um, in the assessment of the ordinance. Um, started drafting regulation with the subcommittee. Many of them are on the. And mission, and what they've done for their time and effort as long as, as well as the C D A members and members of the council. Um, in a full draft that was ready, um, earlier this year, in early twenty twenty two. Um, have been working with the planning commission, um, since May to, um, the middle of this year to reformat and refine those ordinances. Um. Some note, over notices, notice letters went out, um, to anyone whose zoning was proposed to be changed, and we had open houses in August. Um, and looking to adopt these ordinances, um, in fall of, in the fall of this year. For, please, um. And then indicated last month, we had. We have every single, um, individual challenge we can have, um, and, um, so. We had, um, that was during, it's a couple of steps to cancel. Um, several staff with help and discretion, um, have some recommended changes to bring to the planning commission tonight based on that, that, those are in the packet. Um, but again, um, tonight is a health and curing, and that's required by state law. After that, the planning commission has the opportunity to recommend. Um, the ordinance is just to the council or. The group that adopts them. Go on the next slide. Um, the purpose of the ordinance rewrite was one housekeeping. Um, there are a couple of things that needed to be changed to comply. Um, with case law and state law, for instance, signs have to be changed, the sign regulations have to be. Have to be changed to be content control as required by a US Supreme Court case. There were changes to definitions, updating and lighting, solar energy and best practices, parking and landscaping, burn more clarity and flexibility. Um, also, the purpose was to make it easier to use. There are updated graphics and all the graphics have the same, um, graphic identity or approach. There's regulations for specific uses. Were used to be spread, were hard now, spread out, but then across two articles that proposed to be in one. Um, and then also all regulations for larger residential developments, um, to be in one article rather than, again, right now, currently, we're zoning, we're. They're scattered in a couple of different places. Um, but also the intent of the zoning, the ordinance rewrites was to preserve what makes Dexter Dexter. And during the master plan, the planning commission actually looked at a number of options from the historic district. Um, to just leaving things as they are, um, and decided that form-based code was the best choice. Um, next slide. So. What's proposed are two types of zoning districts. One is, a zoning district is a geographic area where there are rules about how. Where things can go and how it can be built. So when you look at that map over there and you see a color in this specific area, that's a zoning district. Um, and that says these rules apply to this place. Um, and a used base district is what you currently have, and that's what's shown, um. On this part of the screen on the left that closes to me, um, and it basically says the same rules apply. Um, no matter how large the building are or no matter what the parcel is across the district. And the uses are really what makes the zoning district different. So for instance, the one that I have up here is multiple family residential district. You hear the title, you know what it is, um, but the assumption sometimes underneath those used bases fixing that everything's the same inside. A form-based approach is the only purpose that determines the form of the. Type of building where it's set on the, on the parcel, how tall it is, what it looks like. It's based on not only zoning district, but on the street and the size of the parcel. And those both regulations are shown on the right of this mixed-use building, but actually in some places, that may be one of two options on a. On a parcel, or that may be one of five, depending on what. What, where it is and what street and what zoning district and what parcel type. Um, and then, um, for instance. And we'll get that, I can show that to you in a bit. Um, so it adds some complexity, but really it's there because. You have an old city or old village that has lots of different parcel sizes, um, in the older parts, and then you have some uniformity and the upturn. So, and the next slide. So in the format, there's. The part, the high points district, so the, that are proposed are the downtown. Village Commercial, Baker Road, Anne of Dexter Road. And then, um, Village Residential one and Village Residential two. And those are all places that were originally planned as part of the, um, Village four. It's a mixed-use corridor. So a place where there's lots of traffic going in and out, and there's different, there's different uses right now. Um, and what starts with that, this is the downtown regulated plan, and every single one of those district, form-based districts that are proposed have a proposed regulating plan. Um, and it starts with the parks like Monument Park. These are the given, and to make sure that we're building off of those, because those are the places that make the, those are the places that Dexter would be. Then, for instance, on this main street is the downtown, and that's a downtown A Street. And what does that mean? That means there's no new curbs. But also on that, it's one by type C parcels, so that's these gray skinny ones. And you can see that these are. They're skinny, skinny parcels, and they're a lot different than these over on Forest. And that main street is what makes Dexter Dexter, that's what people think of. So there are only two types of buildings that are. One, the mixed-use building, um, so like, um. This going down the street, but also, um, like the newer building that was built, um, next to the dairy, we know how it is. Um, or by any special use, so like we had tonight. If a single-use building wanted to come in, um, like the dairy clean, that would have an extra layer scrutiny. You're saying that that's not exactly what we want to look at. But we really only want these two, three-story buildings, um, because Dexter, that one Dexter moved, burned down, we want to be able to have, or a building was destroyed, or the. Parket or the gas station was redeveloped, this is what we want. Um, however, that's a little different than Baker. Um, which is down, which is here, um, and, but you have houses there and you also have houses over on Central. Um, and how, how are those reused? And what should be allowed there? And so on those gray parcels, what we're saying is that. It'll reuse of an existing house, or it can be a two-family house residential with a special approval. But when you go on Forest, which then is in the downtown in this block, is different than this block, is different than this block. Um, and that, there have a house, you have a two-family house, a townhouse, a mixed-use or multiple-family building. Um, and so what the form-based code does is it allows us to look at things block by block. Um, and look to have appropriate regulations for each area. One other thing before I leave is that I want to note a part of the different syntax, because I've gone over some of them, but one that's not, I want to explain is, um. The type E lot, which many of you who are here from neighborhoods, um, you may see down in the regular, you can, that have near your house. Um, and those that have a house, a two-family house or mixed-use or multiple-family buildings, and those are typical larger buildings. Um, or institutional buildings, larger, larger parcels like the one you're on right now. Um, and those also allow for gadget reuse of institutions over there. Um, the final thing that I want to talk about here is the type Z, and those are the ones with the stripes. So on this, that, um. Where the gas station is, um, over here, um, which is a classroom cemetery. Um, and also here where Baker ends and that. And also here where Baker ends and that's also, and otherwise D. D's are areas across the city that are of historical significance. And so what it said in the ordinance is that they are required, the new development and redevelopment to create a positive visual landmark. So you saw a lot of discussion tonight about what could happen with the outdoor seating area. Those, for those particular parcels which are maybe redeveloped and have a significant, have significance to the community. There's additional regulation in there to allow the planning commission to do what they did tonight. And to bring in the history and the significance of that parcel or its location. And how it needs to be a quality place that reflects the best of Dexter. We have another one. And the reason we need to look at this is that you've got two different places in Dexter. So this is an aerial photo taking of the village in 1960. And you can see really even probably from the back, you can see the squares and rectangles of that original village plot. But you can see there's a little, you can see the cul-de-sac here, that's Walport. You can see that that's a different type of development that's coming. We can go to the next slide. So this is taken in 2020 and then you can see how this village now city has expanded. And where they've expanded, you can see that it's a very different land use pattern than here and here. And so if you can go to the next one. What is proposed is in 1960, you can see that, this is actually in the outline of the form-based code. Those are, those are areas that were in the original plot. And then the use-based districts that outside the, developed under the current zoning. Can you go to the next slide? Also, the other thing about the form-based zoning is that the reason for the long extension, Baker Road stops where the village platform is. But if you go down Dexter and Ann Arbor Road, it goes to the city limit. And why doesn't it, why do you have form-based code there? What, where, why does it extend down there? It's because of the number of uses. If you look at the colors underneath it, there's lots of different colors there and it's almost like a quilt. The idea is to have a mixed-use district, but also to at the same time underneath those help to have architectural requirements. They don't have now for all of, all of that area in order to produce the quality of the design that you're looking for. That Dexter values. Can you go to the next one? So why are we changing it all? Because we couldn't, you're getting free use results right now. Your current zoning, you're required to, within the central business district, downtown, that architecture has to be consistent with historical buildings. The parking's in the rear or on-street. The building height is a minimum of two stories, max of three. You've got 70% of the first floor windows. These buildings have to be a maximum one foot setback from the front yard, so it pushes the buildings up front. Pedestrian entrance up front and the exterior finish and any other wall like down to the pedestrian walkway. And it has to be a quality finish. So it has to be the same, almost the same as your front. With the proposed zoning, there are a lot more, we have the ability, especially with the form-based code, to do a number of things. First of all, architecture is consistent with buildings within one block. Also, then not only are the regulations for the first floor, but there's regulations proposed for the second floor. Because if you look at those second floor windows and the size of them, the shape of them and how they line up, that's part of what creates that place. There's sidewalk design requirements, so, and that would be some of the street type. Not necessarily based on the building type. And so that's why, and that will be different for a downtown A Street than it might be for a downtown B Street. In terms of, if you think about main street, there's areas for people to sit and watch and those other seating areas. If somebody comes in and redevelops, let's say the gas station, where does that sidewalk go? Right now, there's not a lot of, there's not a lot of requirements. What's proposed is to put in requirements based on this retail. And then also is that there's an incentive that's built in and if they, if the developer proposes a plaza or gathering place, those buildings can be stepped back. And that's automatic, that, that's, if they, if they do that, the planning commission will look at it. But they have to have that plaza or that pedestrian space in perpetuity. And right now, that might happen, but it would be a lot of negotiation back and forth. Can you go to the next slide? Also in terms of current zoning, places like the mill, the cider mill are C1 zoning. So that's a general business zoning. Commercial uses, including auto, such as special land uses. Right now, for this particular parcel, there's no architectural standards. Cool, next slide. What's proposed is this, this would be a village commercial, except it's type D, a prominent site. Because obviously this is a significant place, not entering into the city, but a place that everybody's probably visited and has memories of. And so there are architectural standards for this area for proposed for village commercial. And what it would allow is a whole variety of uses in terms of, it could be any different building type. So it could be a single-use building, kind of like the Dairy Queen, an institutional building, a townhouse, multiple-family building. But it would allow retail, residential, and institutional uses, but no auto uses would be proposed there. So really trying to look, we tried to look at each parcel and see what we could do for it. And in some areas we could, and also if you go to the next one. In terms of current zoning, top is Dover, the bottom is Webster. There's same zoning for these two blocks right now. There's no requirements for garage placements and they have the same block width and minimum lot size. Go to the next slide. On Dover, a lot of those lots don't need the minimum lot width and lot height. So what's proposed in this village residential is that that lot width is decreased and lot width does too, that would make a lot of places conforming in the whole village. And that's one of the intents also within any zoning ordinance update is to bring as many lots into compliance as possible. Because when something is non-conforming, sometimes it's difficult for, it's difficult for, it's difficult to get a mortgage or a loan. Because the non-conforming regulations say the house burned down, then you can't replace it. You have to add to what, you have to replace the non-conforming to the current, to the current zoning. So as much as possible, we're looking to also minimize that. And then also if you look at these two blocks, they're really different. And these block on Dover, you can't see a garage, but in Webster, you know, some people might say that's the first thing that you see. So a village residential, the garage should be at least five feet from the house. Also, but we've seen there's been a lot of problems in terms of variances being asked for, for houses in the village. Because if they put on a porch or expand their porch, they are violating the setback, the front yard setback. So looking to propose that the porches be treated a little differently. And those can be five feet closer to the street than the house itself could. For the R1 zoning, which again is proposed to be in areas that are more outside. There's listed changes to accessory buildings. There's no requirement for garage replacements and that's lot width and lot, and lot sizes remain the same. Go to the next slide. Also, the proposed zoning, there is additional environmental protections that are proposed. This would only apply if it was new development, I believe on two acres over there. And so that, and really would apply it to most likely if things were annexed outside the city. So looking to preserve performance standards, weapon protection, stormwater management. And also looking to have a baseline assessment of environmental quality. And that's on any property five acres or larger where natural features are impacted. Well, while we're here, that he could change this plan, Gray. Thank you, by the way, for helping with that. There are some things that are proposed not to change. So anything in lieu of planning and development and that, those are contract zones, those aren't going to change. As I said, then all school, city, and cemetery properties are public facilities and that replaces a public park district. And then we've gone through, you can see that these areas, this area, that area. And those, those are currently either R1A or R1B and those are going to be proposed to be one family residential. And then there are other changes, there's a lot of changes that have been here, but basically you have an overlay district down Ann Arbor. Ann Arbor Dexter Road, instead of having the uses underneath and then the code, the overlay over it, those will be all combined in one and will allow the city a mixed-use corridor. And the same thing for Baker to the C area. And that one's proposed to be, to expand a little bit. And the reason that's proposed to expand is that by using the form-based approach, you can have different regulations for houses, multiple, outdoor mixed-use buildings. Based on where it's located and what. Can you go to the next one? So again, I want to thank everybody who was great and patient with us last month. And again, we had some conversation between myself and Michelle and Grace and planning commission chair. We have some recommended changes based on that input. So if you go to the next slide, I'm going to look at the. So when we met with you last, when we were here last month, the, and what has been published is the proposal is for this village residential one to go all the way down and over on part of that. And that allowed, that VR1 has as special uses some retail. And folks shared that they didn't feel like that was appropriate. So said in talking staff, the VR1 moves back to the area that's just zone village residential right now. And that village residential has those retail uses as special land uses. And so those would come back and it would match the existing, it would match that in a existing building. And the VR2 is primarily a single-family zone. The only things that would be allowed as special land uses, other than single-family, would be institutional like the church here or school. But also essential public services or, and, and essential, essential services. Then you can go to the next slide. There's the east side of Central Street. So this up here, here's the, here's the cider mill. Here, here's the river. These are proposed to go from R1A or R1B to Village Residential 2. It was asked that those be R1 by some residents there when you look at it. Actually, there are a number of these blocks that you can see are smaller. And so they would be non-conforming, so by changing this, it's the same uses essentially, except for the public service, essential services. And community centers, but it would decrease the non-conformities. So we're recommending to leave that VR1 in order to decrease the non-conformities. Can you go to the next, thank you, Grace. Also, we are good folks that Second Street needs more study. And absolutely, we agree, I think the planning commission would agree. And that that is a great candidate for a form-based district. Since that we're not ready for that at this time. So the proposal is to have all the zoning on that street be as close to its current zoning as possible. Where, and then having for these places where that it's perfect. So that areas over here and over this block here, so with this second. And this is Hudson, that becomes VR2. And then here, and this area, the person in the door to it become I1. And that's except what they are now instead of the rezoned R1. Next one. Also, there's 8030 Huron Street, which is right here, a multiple-family building. That has non-conforming setbacks and variances were obtained in 1992. It is right on the proposed map as to be VR, as VR2. The thing that takes to extend that village commercial there would allow the, which would allow the, the multiple family in that area. Another thing that we're taking into mind, taking in mind with the whole approach, but also in a couple of these is that you don't want to, if you change the property so it takes away the use that it is or limits it. It could be conceived as a taking and could put the city in a vulnerable position legally. So we don't want to, we want to minimize those as much as possible. Right. Finally, we heard from folks who had, I was in on Central Street, here in downtown, also here around. That if they're in the CBD and they can't have residential use, that is a problem. And so what's proposed is that, what's recommended is that on downtown A, I mean on type A and type E parcels, on downtown B and village streets. Sometimes, but if you look up here, it's the red areas. Those first floor residential uses would, could be allowed. And so, and especially with adaptive reuse. So we've given proposed changes to the zoning ordinance and tables that document that. And recommended pages that the planning commissions and their packet and available. Finally, next slide, next slide. We have some small changes to accessory structures. And again, these were to eliminate a lot of coverage just for the backyard and the residential district. Distance from accessory buildings in non-residential districts to remain 10 feet, they were proposed at 25. And the maximum heights in the public facilities, industrial and research design, research development, rather than 14 feet, which is probably unrealistic. You think about the big things that need to go in there, that is the maximum for accessory building. So that's like a shed or garage, not attached to the, the, the big building. That's either the height of the principal building, the big building, or the maximum height for the zoning district, whichever is less. Those are the recommended changes for the zoning ordinance. Also, before the planning commission tonight is subdivision 4. That leaves out streets with vacant property lines for future residential, commercial, and industrial subdivisions. Except for new developments with multiple buildings on large parcels and that would likely only apply, it would only apply likely if the city expands by any time. The planning commission, and then you can go to the next slide. In our documentation, it's got a lot of things about what's proposed here, but what the things we want to bring to folks' attention is that it really plans for complete streets so people can walk, bike, and drive. And that the infrastructure for all of those has to be provided at the outset. Looking to have alley places, looking to allow alleys currently, your subdivisions ordinance does not. Requiring connections to the trail system and then looking also to keep bicycle paths or lanes in industrial development. But finally, it's also to keep Dexter Dexter or let Dexter as it stands to be one of those two options. Currently, your subdivisions ordinance only enables this type of development. So the suburban style that's on the outskirts. But there may be a time where repeating what the village looks like is appropriate. And wanting to make sure that that option was there to be developed if, if was appropriate at the time. Next slide. So now we'll have the public hearing. So now we'll have the public hearing, um, and then next back up for that is planning commission recommendation and the city council. Um, and those are public readings and the public is welcome to, um, by state law, has to have a chance to talk about each one. And then also I believe at the city council level, there's a public hearing, shall I correct, on the subdivision of the board?
City council, the level of hearings, subdivision ordinance, because that's required by charter.
So with that, I'm happy to turn it over to you, Mr. Chair, for the public hearing or answer the questions.
Sure, um, well, I think we'll probably, I don't know, Michelle, were you gonna, do you have anything to add after that or?
No, my, my letter just goes over in a little more detail for you, the proposed changes that Megan went over and I provided to you gaps. It's all color-coded. And then the recommended motion or suggested motion allows you to take each one of those, um, there's, uh, nine different final changes for you to, um, to incorporate as some part of the motion if you are ready to make a recommendation to council. And it's set up so that it's shall or shall not, depending on the decisions that you make. And as we get to that point, um, I'm certainly happy to answer any questions and talk to you for a bit.
Okay, sure, we'll probably have some questions too, so. Um, okay, so at this time, I will open up the public hearing at nine o'clock, exactly. So, um, if you'd like to speak to this issue, please step forward and state your name and address. Um, and I think we have three to five minutes, women on comments. And we also have, if there's anyone available online, yes, sir?
If you don't mind, I think my voice is good enough, I have a disability.
Okay, yeah, okay, sure.
I also gave away my last copy of what I was gonna say.
So, well, we do have that for the record.
Do you want to?
But could you? I, I did put out here. But could you introduce yourself again and your address?
I will do that, yes. Uh, my name is Jim from Cargar. Uh, I live at thirty-five eighty Hudson Street, which is at the corner of Second Street. Corner of our house, my wife Sheri is next to me here. The corner of our house dates to the mid eighteen sixties, which means dating all the way back to San Dexter. Uh, Sheri and I are nearly thirty-year residents here, that makes more in the side of township than our. So, and we both put our kids through Dexter schools, uh, where I also taught at Bates and Creekside. So I may not be an original Dexter family nonetheless. I, I think I have a fair amount of street cred among those whose heart and soul moves through this city. I can provide comments for the September sixth hearing to the staff on a while on the road. These comments were apparently omitted from your packet due to oversight, we're all human. Uh, I believe they should now be in the supplemental tab on the commission page and here tonight with hard copy. I noticed there's some out front there. I, I, I note that I'm completely embarrassed that that's in paper copy, including Ron, with all of the mistakes in it. We're in when I wrote it on the road in Saskatchewan, because somebody's gonna look at that old one and say, he taught our kids. I'm here to recommend the commission act on the staff recommended motion number two, which is vote to postpone action on the updated zoning and subdivision ordinances. I do not do this lightly. You and staff have invested huge work in tonight's product. It contains many planning elements that I agree with philosophically, including use of form-based code. Important missing elements leading to this request. First and foremost, I, I really think you need to explicitly ground this new ordinance in clear language that connects form-based changes to smart growth. I work for US EPA. EPA produced smart growth recommendations, ten of them. There's lots of material out there from EPA on how to incorporate smart growth into, uh, regulation and ordinances in cities, including form-based. Uh, a lot of that now is climate-driven. I just read an article from EPA in May of this year, which specifically relates smart growth strategies to carbon footprints from communities. I note that in none of the materials that I have read so far, there's anything about climate, have I heard anything about our footprint? Have I heard anything about the connection between smart growth strategies and zone-based, uh, zone-based decision-making? Uh, so your action is a lot more than mere housekeeping, making the ordinance is easier to use and achieving consistency with master plan. What is the fundamental public good that arises from a proposed co-change? Why are other cities, large and small, moving to this approach? I think you need to articulate how the form-based zoning offers win-win-wins for citizens, government and businesses, and makes the ordinance much more clearly connected to that goal. This stems from offering owners cost and time savings due to simplicity and certainty in, in view processes in exchange for explicit requirements that fundamentally change direction from traditional zoning outcomes to good, smart growth development. I believe this is why the implementation section of the master plan explicitly calls on you, the planning commission, to investigate form-based code in the first place. Second, meaningfully acknowledge the challenges when implementing form-based zoning in the current city footprint, which is overwhelmingly built up, as opposed to the areas annexed for future house, housing, commercial or I and R and D uses. This is not a simple task to make philosophically appropriate and practical to implement in a city that's got a footprint which is built up the way ours is. This corridor is one of the, uh, the, 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 um, make, make meaningful, uh, steps to address the hot mess of zoning for the entire east side of Second Street through inwards. To me, if you accept the higher level purposes that I just mentioned, this becomes a no-brainer. Uh, not with an add-on study, but due to this revision, it's one of the most important pieces of this zoning ordinance. And it looks to me like it's getting punted down the road for budget reasons and time reasons. This corridor is one of the clearest current examples, and I think Megan, you mentioned this, in the city of how form-based zoning done well could drive positive change in the city. If you walk two blocks east, all those single-family homes on our beautiful new Second Street sidewalk. And you look on the other side, you'll pass a light industry site that is zone commercial, that's the last of Zell, go figure. Two vacant lots, both of which would be zone I one, go figure. A largely vacant, blatantly non-performing, essentially abandoned, a dear building. And the new spur sidewalk next to their parking lot, leading to the best-kept secret park in town. In today's proposal, exit air and two vacant lots are proposed to be left I one on a classification, which is not even in the new zoning table to my knowledge and reading. This cries out for a responsible form-based approach. And I am not advocating that this is a choice between research and development and I want, no. I want you to go back and look at it from a top-down approach to the whole bloody corridor and make it right. Make, uh, I'm gonna soften this a little bit because Megan gave me some answers to some of the questions.
Okay, I'm sorry, you can continue, but we're gonna, we're at about seven minutes, I do wanna make sure we get.
All right, I will, I will, I'll kick down pretty, pretty quick here. There are some, there, there are some significant hiccups for me in the V one, VR one, VR two, uh, language. If you look at the intent, my house very clearly would fit in the VR one district. It's one of the oldest houses in, it's in the original flat, blah, blah, blah. Chet, I think yours is two, and yours is slated to become VR two. Um, instead of the VR one, which I think was the original. I guess I'll just close this out by saying, uh, my comments are based on a review of the current packet, uh, the supplement in my prior comments. There is undoubtedly more, this is a huge packet. It's north of five hundred pages just for the package, not counting the supplement and everything else. Twice, I did get help from staff, thank you very much, Michelle. Been focusing on changes since the September sixth packet where I was out of town. Still, I wrap these comments at six P M. this evening without reviewing important provisions. Thanks for your consideration, I welcome your questions or later conversations with you or other residents. And I guess, uh, with the end of that, I leave you guys as representative of protecting the public trust. Most people come here to talk about their individual progress. I don't think I said much of anything about mine. I'm interested in the community, I live here, I wanna live here until I die.
Thank you, yes, thank you, we appreciate that. Um, but anybody else like to address the planning commission on this item? Please, uh, go forward, state your name and address.
All right, hi, my name is John Poeh, I live at eighty-eight twenty-five Trinkly Road in Dexter. Um, I'm speaking for you, um, on item number four, um, Michelle's report and outline that it consulted. Um, as said, I think it's headed in that direction, but multi-family is currently allowed in VR district, but will, um, but won't be in the current proposal unless we make this change. My hope is that, um, the property is changed to not create a non-conforming use. The current, I believe the current multi-family, um, housing is a good transition between the commercial and the residential down the street. Um, and making it a special use within the, uh, the large commercial is probably the best way to.
Great, thank you, sir. Anybody else like to address the commission at this time? Please step forward, state your name and address. There's no one else, is there anybody online? Sorry?
No.
Oh, okay, thank you. Okay, thank you, um. Okay, we did receive quite a few communications within our packet as well, um, as part of public communication. So I guess at that point, then we will close the public hearing at nine eleven. Um, and we are now open for, uh, staff motions, staff actions, sorry, not staff, planning commissions. Uh, yeah, planning commission motions, planning commission action. Um, I do wanna publicly thank the staff, Megan and Michelle, Grace, I mean, you guys, especially like when last month's meeting went a little bit haywire. I know Grace, you were running all around town trying to get things and, again, and Michelle was sick. So, um, I thank you for everybody for showing back up here again tonight. And I know there's, there is a tremendous amount of work that was done since last month. I know I talked with Megan right after the meeting and there's a lot of things. So I, I know that, I know much work all this takes to correspond with various citizens. So we really appreciate that because, right, obviously, we're doing this all for you all as well as all the citizens of Dexter. So, um, yeah, I just really wanted to thank you guys, because I know it's a tremendous amount of work. And really, we, we have been looking, as I know most of the knowledge, that we've been looking at this for, for quite a while now. Um, I think we all care pretty deeply about it, so. Um, and there's a couple of us who are more of a select group of our commission that were more keenly on the zoning changes. I know I believe Kyle, Tom Phillips, who wasn't here tonight, I believe Ken. Um, okay, so, um, kinda to help focus us down on some issues before they brought into the larger commission, so, um, so, yes, so thank you. Oh, and, oh, wow, sorry, sorry, wow. Thank you, Michelle, oh, and wow, by the way, sorry, my council rep, I forgot. Thank you, um, and who are the council reps that worked on it as well, besides Rob?
Yeah, Jamie.
Okay, Jamie Griffin, as well as Robert here, so, thanks, Michelle. Um, okay, so with that, um, we have in our packet, page, it's like fifty-four, there's some motions, we have some discussion, there's, um, some recommended changes that were based both as well on public input, as well as I think some other consultation among staff and things like that to look at these issues. So, um, we can discuss them one by one, we can, somebody can make a motion. Uh, the shall, I believe if, if somebody were putting them forward, if they wanted the changes, they would be the shall. And then the shall-not is not like, the shall-not would be as previously proposed, basically. So it's still a change, but not a different change.
Right, that's the change.
That we already looked at previously, like, okay, so, again, these changes are based on a couple of items. Um, and except for, I think, the last one, I think the last one was, would be a shall-not. I, I believe if we, if that change was based, I think.
Correct, that would be the shall-not.
Shall-not, so it's just, so again, and these are just recommend changes by staff, so, again, based on various inputs. So with that, I'll be quiet for now, and if there's a staff, or sorry, planning commission, uh, motion, we can discuss more.
You do it, you're aware.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion, we're to come. Pursuant to section twenty-three point oh-six of the city of Dexter zoning ordinance, together with the information presented by staff and the input received during the public hearing conducted by the planning commission on October third, twenty-two, the planning commission recommends that city council approve the updated zoning and subdivision ordinances subject to the following changes. Changes one, nine, shall not be approved. And let me tell you why I'm starting with that. We had a plan, we spent a long time putting together that plan. And I think we should discuss as a planning commission each of these individual changes and decide if we believe their merit. I'm more than willing to change the motion, I just want us to discuss each of them. And I think our default should be not to change them unless we agree with the recommendation and have reasons why we agree with it. But I wanna be clear, I'm only approving this so we can have this, I'm only putting this forward so we can have this discussion.
Thank you, and is there support for that?
Sure.
You can't make, we make the motion. Okay, so, I, I believe that was the, okay, um, okay, so, we do have a motion, so we have some discussion items to discuss. Um, I don't know if you, you want staff to add some additional promotion, or, I mean, again, it's a planning commission. Um, obviously, we have the ability to accept or not accept these, so.
I think we should just go one, here if anyone on the commission has thoughts on it. And then based on our thoughts, here would staff.
Okay, that's fair enough. Um, so only, so our, so again, I think that's a reasonable approach. So item number one, again, I, I happen to be looking at the suggested motions. And there's also, Michelle added more explanation, obviously, with, uh, preceding that in the packet, so.
Right on page fifty-two.
I should say, Michelle, I thought your comments were absolutely, really, really, add or die.
Thank you, I felt pretty helpful if you had.
So I think, um, I think some of my questions on, or I mean, some of my thoughts on, on a couple of these, I'm trying to narrow them down in particular, but that I have thought, and, and Jim, you're absolutely right, we've been looking at this a long time. And I think as we've narrowed it down a little bit more in, 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 um, in different pieces. And I know a couple of members of the public could point out as well, there, there's so much information here, even as planning commissioners, we try to take it piece by piece, and there's different things I focus on at different times. So I think one of them that does make sense is regarding, uh, well, item one I happen to be on right now, which I, I do support that change because I think, um, I was a little bit more in favor of commercial, like, thinking through some commercial uses within those neighborhoods. But I think now we, we have quite a bit of area that I believe under the existing zone, zoning as well as proposed, that can adapt to those uses and many of those uses that are currently being utilized anyways, commercial. So I think not extending that, to, to me, makes a little bit of sense in that area and keeping that residential character aligned there, because it's not like we don't allow for those kind of, and I think what the intent of some of us was to get houses that are kind of cool businesses that, you know, that, that look like houses, but still kind of function as business. But I think we have enough other areas within the city to allow for that. So, um, that was kind of my thoughts on that one. So again, I was supporting the change, but I'd be interested to know, um, additional feedback, yes, Kyle?
So just to clarify, the, we've taken this new form-based VR district, which kind of overlays the old residential, and made VR one and two, one of which, uh, would allow some level of commercial, one which excludes that. That basically the.
Yes, yes.
So it brings up an interesting point, where do we have a form for a commercial building that would be in that district?
In the VR one?
Correct. You see, that, what you don't want necessarily is a Walmart. Uh, we would like is some cute little neighborhood store, and do we have that form in the forms? If we don't, then.
No, the only forms that are permitted in the, in the VR one is a house, a two-family. And then a, a single user and institutional. And then attached residential, and then, yeah.
So to be clear, nobody could buy a house, knock it down, put a sub in life?
Correct, no, no.
But they could if it was prior, it would have been possible?
It, so the way we, the way it's been disseminated, the areas that are in blue on the map, those are currently what's called VR in our current zone. And you can do a mix of residential or commercial or both. The emphasis in this district is residential with the, with the retail and commercial and office, especially uses. The areas that are now being shown to be the VR two, those were previously to be VR one. And in all honesty, having retail and residential probably would have disrupted neighborhoods. So I'll use Mr. McCarter's example, Chad's house. If we keep the VR one there, his house could be a mix, a commercial and a residential. And that could disrupt that area. That's just one thing. So by making it just VR two with the residential, you're restricting use and maintaining the form. In the VR one, where we're proposing it now, you allow certain uses, but only with forms that are similar for in that area. So like you said, a house that's.
Sure, it would be like one against house with an office.
Yeah, like Finklaw or Finn's Insurance. But you don't necessarily really want that all the way through your neighborhoods. So I think the residents concerned from that were well-funded.
So points one and two, or I should have said this, points one and two are sort of entwined.
Yes, points one and two are.
Yeah, exactly. So I would combine my.
So Matt's in favor. Is anyone against? Because if anyone's against, if no one's against, there's no reason to. Alright, so.
That's a good update.
So points one and two, I think based on no one being against, or should be, will in the final motion be changed to shall? So let's move to point three. And it might be more helpful, Michelle, if you could, maybe at the beginning, if you give a few sentences.
So this is, this is a block of houses on the east side of Second Street between Hudson and Inverness. And some of the comments that we heard were, well, if you make it multiple family, that those houses right there really are single family. And that could, that'll be my word, that the public's word, could destabilize the area. So again, looking at that, if we maintain the VR two, so it's just residential, with the understanding that when this zoning ordinance finally gets adopted and becomes effective, we're going into the sub-area planning for Second Street as has always been anticipated and actually dictated or prescribed, if you will, in the master plan. So instead of making the drastic move now, leave it as it is. Let's go through that sub-area planning process and get the, the public engagement from the residents on Second Street as well as the adjacent neighborhoods to totally inform what a new master plan, sub-area plan would be for that. And then the zoning that actually fits.
Michelle, one thing I'd say about this, you just said that that little group of buildings is primarily single family. Isn't it, unless I'm thinking the wrong space, aren't those buildings primarily multi-family right now?
The block on the other side is the Dexter Flats.
Oh, right, so you're in there.
We're one block over.
But essentially, if we leave that whole side of the road, how would it?
If we just leave it as, as it currently is. Oh, I'm sorry, the third one, you're asking about Central Street. I'm sorry, I was looking at Second Street. So let me go back to Central Street.
Because that's what.
Should we skip?
No, we're on three. Wait, but she skipped, she was explaining number four.
I went to four.
Yeah, she went to four that time. Okay, it's okay.
So, so Central Street currently, those are R1B zoning. As the R1B zoning.
You're back on Center Street.
I'm back on to Central Street.
Why aren't we talking about three? That's where we're at.
Yes. Central.
Oh wait, so these numbers.
Oh, I'm looking, sorry.
I'm on the motion. I'm sorry.
Yeah, sorry, Jim, we were looking at the motion, the number threes on the, on the motion. They're slightly, they're basically aligned, sorry.
Michelle, I apologize.
Oh, it's okay.
I was looking at three in your explanation.
Sorry. It's two in the explanation, three on the motion. Okay, so that east side currently R1B. But three of, I think it's three or four of those parcels are non-informing based on that R1B. By going to VR two, you maintain the single-family use. For those areas, it brings those parcels that are non-conforming into conformity. Now, the trade-off is that what used to be a special use in the R1B, mainly the essential services and the community center use, become permitted principal. But they're also governed by the form, which means they have to look like a house. That's not going to satisfy all of the residents, I believe. But it does, it does reduce, it eliminates non-conformities. One of the things that you can do as part of the Second Street study would be to include that little area as part of the sub-area planning. So it's a minor change, but it does preserve the single-family residential of that area instead of making it VR one and adding commercial, which the residents definitely don't want.
Okay.
Okay.
Can you comment?
So they're giving, they're escaping commercial, but they're allowing institutional.
You could call it institutional, but they're foreign ways. They're special uses.
But they're, aren't both VR one and VR two are foreign based?
Yes, but VR one allows commercial and they don't want commercial.
But it does, but VR two allows, what do we have to talk?
So as a, they're currently R1B. R1B is just single-family, childcare, things like that, that you have to allow in a residential. Essential services and community centers are special uses in there. If you make it VR one as we had originally proposed, you're adding commercial as a principal use. It's just a form-based district now.
Okay, so essential services and community are already there.
Correct.
Okay, I see, alright.
But they become principal as a whole street, so.
And again, I think my, one issue with that is kind of similar to what I said previously. It does open up additional areas for commercial, which it would unless we.
Change that.
Change. Correct, right, right.
I'd like to say on this one, I thought, I think we were right originally going with VR one. I think it's where it is and the character of the businesses across the street, the original, our original designation of it, I think for the development of the town and in the overall study was correct. I don't think we should make this change.
What, why do you think there's, do you think this is a question of a taking of sorts?
Can't be taken.
Those people bought in what they thought was a residential district.
But that's still permitted.
Yeah, it's still permitted, but now we're adding in something that they thought.
Right, but that's not a taking.
Taking's a very specific.
So let's, so let's flip it. Let's say it was allowed to be commercial currently. And we downzoned it so that it could only be residential. That in theory could be.
Well, and I think in item six too, at least on our motions, is where we're going to, that discussion may come again in regarding eight fifty-three, thirty-three here on Street. That's where we've got an existing use that we would be making non-conforming. So that's, that's an issue. But, okay, so, yeah, exactly, so sorry. So on this one, you're going forward with the shall not, right? Yeah, so that it would remain.
If everybody else agrees, I mean, I want to have a discussion.
Yep.
Megan just pointed out to me, I made a mistake with this. Those parcels on the east side were always, were proposed to be VR two, not VR one. My mistake on my, on my report. The residents don't want a VR two because of essential services and community center no longer being a special use.
So what?
It should be, it should, we're saying that it should stay VR two because it eliminates the non-conformity of the existing R1B.
What the, what the residents wanted was this area to be the same yellow as Wall Court or here. So to be that suburban style zoning. Okay, so, and we've always had it proposed as VR one.
Okay.
Okay. I mean, it's just VR two, I'm sorry, VR two.
Okay, so that would, that's a shell, so that's a shell. That's what you're proposing.
No, it shall.
No, that's a shall because we're.
Oh, because the explanation was original.
Yeah, sorry, Jim, okay, so that is a shall, okay. So now the number, where are we, so that's a shall.
That's a shall.
Okay.
Does anyone think it should be a shall?
Yeah, I agree with that on that section.
That's very, this is all very confused.
So wait, I'm sorry, so it shall be changed to VR two?
VR two, correct.
It shall be the VR two as it was initially proposed. If I sent VR one, I need to escape.
Correct, so there'd be no change, that was.
Okay, okay.
It'll stay.
I guess I just don't understand, yeah, I mean, whatever.
On that, the first one's where shall, shall, and then there's shall, so, okay, so number four.
So the current zoning is VR, which allows multiple family. This particular development, it's a multiple family, they receive.
No, we're on the motion.
We're on the motion, I said, Michelle. We're on the motion, the R1 parcel.
R1 parcel is on second.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
This is basically saying, we want to just leave them as, as the industrial and then like leave it as they are now and then follow up with this.
Right, what about Mr. McCarter's point that industrial isn't even, to his.
So our industrial district is not a form-based district. We did not do form-based in the industrial. So those two parcels are currently I one. They were saying, leave it I one, we'll come back and do the sub-area plan, which may result in different uses, forms, et cetera. But we'll have the public engagement of that corridor and those residents in order to, to make that decision. Instead of it's, we either follow the master plan or we leave it to them the way it is. I don't, and I'll refer to Megan if the person insists that. I don't, I can't come up with a scenario where we come up with a different zoning when it hasn't been prescribed in the master plan. So.
How is that, I mean, is that a taking? Can we keep talking about that? If we changed it though, to something that's other than what it is right now?
So I have to say, like, we can't use this taking word.
I'm just, I don't.
I understand. We should better think about it as, are we creating an unfairness to the owner or the community? Because taking, we would never have gotten to this point if it was a taking. It wouldn't have passed legal review.
Yeah, that's why I was like, why did just come up?
Doesn't this mean that we could never take away the industrial use of those areas? We could add stuff, we can make.
No, that's not, you can't do it arbitrarily or cooperatively, which is why the studies.
Which is, I think basically, if we keep it, oh, sorry, Megan.
No, I just want to affirm what Michelle said, is that you can, you can look to change the use of a property, but you need to have study and reasons. And ideally, an amendment to your master plan, which says that's what it is. We're, as part of that process, we've engaged with the public and property owners to find what implements your vision of your city in those particular areas. At this point, we don't have that study for Second Street. And I know that many of you have said, we need to do that. But we've always, we've never had the point where we could. And zoning ordinance also, it's a living document that we'll change. So what the current ordinance with a proposal in front of you does is it sets up a structure to probably implement the vision of Second Street. But at this point, we don't have that all lined up in a way that would be effective.
So Kyle, yes?
A question and a comment too, and then related to Second Street. So, and I, I'm definitely sympathetic to Mr. Carter's point where, I'll just get it in here and include it because that's behind the temp.
You need to wait until you've done.
Probably better to do the community input and all this steps that go on the area plan. And the question of that is, you know, to do that right, how long of a process is that?
So I'm thinking, so what, I've already had conversations with Justin. He's, I'd ask Megan to, even that she's more than doing this with the master plan and then the zoning ordinance update, to make a proposal, come up with a scope of work and your proposal, time, cost, all of the items. You'd be looking at that, so with city council. If it's something that gets approved and seen it as early as starting in March, going through the rest of the fiscal year and into the next one. But I think it could be done before the end of next year, so probably a year.
Okay.
Maybe a year and a couple of months.
Sure, that's, that's enough. I just, you know, there's a timeline associated with that. That is probably too big of a bite to fit into this.
Into one meeting.
Yeah, and I think, and to the concerns, but I agree. And I think to, to do it right, we will invest that time. So I, I think, because it is an area we struggled with with recent proposals when we had the self-storage. I mean, we were all of us, we're kind of a little bit, so, yeah, I think it's the key focus of us. I think Michelle knows that it's a priority of the planning commission, now Justin knows. So I think going forward with this one, if, if it was amenable to the motion maker, we should just leave it as shall revert back to the current I one zoning. That's number four, that's number four. Okay, now number, so.
Didn't, didn't we?
Okay, alright, thank you.
Didn't we delay the repaving of the whole street a second because we weren't ready? Because there was some discussion of.
That's just.
They repaved and yet it was a watering place, the repaving comes in.
And that should go in and.
Along with the sidewalk on the other side of the street.
Okay, thank you, so, okay, thank you. Okay, so items.
Item four, in the motion number.
Yeah, in the motion number five, we're now on. This is the eastern block facing Second Street between Inverness and Hudson. Shall shall not be changed to VR two, and that was regarding non-conformity, I believe.
Right, that's, that's the one where it was proposed to be multiple family. If I remember it, there was feedback, and I believe it was, Mr. McCarter was one of the people who were questioning the multiple family designation. So by making it the VR two, you're keeping it similar to what the uses are or the current zoning. Megan can show you. And again, we're just delaying a decision to make of the street.
Okay.
The study done.
So I'm really opposed to that, like, but I will say I own those homes. And if all those homes are multi-family except for one, and it should be multi-family, that area should be multi-family. And. I I'm a shell not unless, you know, I'm in the minority here.
So if.
That stretch of homes should be multi-family.
So all of the houses there are.
Except for one.
Except for one are multiple family.
Correct.
Okay. Um. I thought that going back to the master plan, um, existing land use would give me some clarity. Because I thought that that's what the uses were there, and this was just the maintaining. Um. If we go to VR two and those are multiple family, when you say, no, no, multiple families, three units or more.
Okay, then only probably two of them, there's a du, there's a duplex, a single family, a duplex, a multi-family, a multi.
I.
The one on the corner of Second.
That's small.
And Hudson, that's multi, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Then it's duplex, duplex.
Single family duplex.
The one next to the brick building is a duplex. The one next to the corner of Hudson and Second Street.
I feel like I should just.
It's a.
I offer some information.
But if we. We can't, we don't do public comment, well, yeah, I'm sorry, we can't public comment right now, um, so I'm sorry, were you gonna verify? I.
Well, the general point is, is they're not all single family.
The general, the general point is residents, residents, residents are generally opposed to multifamily housing. And so public comment is always against.
Right.
And so I don't like this change.
I get what you're saying.
So I say, so that would be a shall not still, unless unless. Right, exactly, but that's what, so the motion on the floor right now would be a shall not. Uh.
Are they orange, very valid, yeah?
Yeah, they would be, they would be orange, it would be shall not.
They would stay orange.
Like they are not. Yeah, which is what we had decided.
But this is with the understanding, this is gonna come under review again. If we do the second.
I mean, if we did a Second Street plan, everything, we could change anything we want.
Right, exactly, yes, that would be, we're studying as well. Okay, I mean, I I.
Let's wait, Michelle.
So one of the concerns that Megan and I were looking at is what these standards are for multiple families, by the way, lot setbacks, size, et cetera. Um, all of those are currently zoning multiple family that lot. Um, they're all.
Right now, before we do any.
Right, and they're all non-conforming because they don't meet the standards. If you keep the multiple family, they're still non-conforming, they don't meet standards. Um, you're not picking up anything, you're not gaining anything, it's a, it's a status quo. Um.
That's why I like.
But it also allows, again, that Second Street study.
To, yeah.
To look at those properties in a more comprehensive way with the corridor and come up with a zoning that is. Of reflective and recognizes existing conditions as well as what you want going forward.
Well, Karen just had a question, I have one too, which is um. If we left it multi-family right now, is there anything that would prevent us from changing it during the study?
No, no, you you would do it after the study is done, and that's the point.
So then it's. Yeah, and I would have, then, yes, I would have, because we'll be able to look at that in more detail. Yeah, since we're gonna look at that in detail, okay. Um, I uh, item six under the motions uh is the zoning of eighty thirty three.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, I I mean, I think that's pretty obvious to me, I think that we should allow that to be VC. Rather than make an existing apartment building non-conformant, that's been there for a while and. Um, yeah, frankly, I think fits in very well, so I, I mean, I, yeah, I think it's perfect, so.
I think we have, frankly.
Okay.
Potential problems if we did.
Yeah, that's the, so that's a shell.
Okay, so that's a shell, all right, move on.
Shell.
Um, item, motion seven, um, this is the first four residential uses, this is one I thought a lot about. Um. Yeah, yeah, um, I don't know.
So so think of those historic homes that are on Central, on Alpine, um, on Forest. Um, we're expanding the central business district. By by allowing the first four new stands only on the parcels and only on downtown B and Village Streets. You you haven't eliminated the ability to do niche use, but you've allowed. Residential to still be part of these neighborhoods because they are still predominantly residential. Um, so you, in some ways, could could view it as having the best of both worlds.
And that would permit also some of those to revert to residential.
Yeah.
That look like houses.
Correct.
Yeah, I I, yeah, I think that's, that's, I mean, we had a lot, uh, was it the Honey House, the owners of the Honey House, that that was. I mean, it brought up some good points as well, I mean, several of the other letters that were, I think regarding those residential uses, so I. I mean, I think that should be a shell, but I mean, that's.
I thought you were gonna go shell not.
I know, I was, no, good, all right, we, all right. All right, uh, seven, motion seven. Sorry, motion eight, the setback between principal buildings and then. Shall we change it ten feet, reading your explanation makes sense, but Michelle's, do you wanna give us a five minute?
Yeah.
Minute.
Increasing in those districts to a twenty-five foot, you could be creating a bunch of negative formities. Because it's been ten, there's really no need to change it out to the other, so please, keep it the way it is.
Yep.
So is that shall not? Is it a shell?
Shall, shall be changed.
Shall be changed, yeah, okay, item nine. There, uh, lot coverage, I I know this is an interesting one, we've had a lot of variances for, well, at least in the past, I remember, a lot of variances, and I don't know what the.
I I've been a planner now for lots of years now. And the way I explained it to Megan, it's like, we have this in Northville, we have this here, I can't understand. I've never been able to understand, and I'm sure they explained it in planning school, and it still isn't, so, when you've got alleys. That were originally designed for carriage houses, so that you just pull in. Zoning came along and says, well, you can't, you can only put that VDF structure, but don't take up more than twenty-five percent of that required regard. It it boggles, I I mean, it makes my head hurt to think how you, I know you can numerically do it. But if you're coming in off the alley, the object is to utilize.
That space.
Your your gap, and so, um, and I talked with Megan, she agrees, there's really not a good reason to cover it unless.
Especially with the size of your lot. Yeah, you, you, I mean.
I think I agree with you, but I still don't know if this is a shall or a shall not.
It's a shell.
It's, it's, there shall not be a requirement for the twenty-five percent.
Yeah, and again, I think this is one that didn't necessarily come out of public comment, but came out of just like, well, we looked through it again and said, like, we said they're getting variances and everything else, so that would be a shell. So. Okay, do you wanna, were you taking, do you wanna read through, okay?
Do you have any other changes or?
Oh, yes, sorry, Kyle.
Which you want?
I have one, um, since we were looking at eight and we got into accessory buildings. We'll go to item.
Who is it, Kyle, favorite?
We talked about this before, and I felt like we landed on the idea that a detached accessory building could be five feet off the house.
Oh, it can, that's in the residential, these are just the PF, the I one, the ARB.
So we're all right on that.
Yeah, we're all right with the the stuff that the committee and planning commission wanted.
So in addition to that, there is a thing about, there's a, and maybe this is another topic, but there's a bit of a disconnect between. Just accessory, accessory buildings, and now we have accessory dwelling units. Now, I don't think it's uncommon to find someone who wants to do a future ADU, but needs the garage space now. They wanna build a thing which has got some attic trusses on it, that later they could go and make this accessory apartment above it. Well, unless you go and do the whole thing, and maybe I'm mistaken, but unless you do the whole thing now. The way that the accessory building language, it forces you into a fourteen-foot-high building. Which is not tall enough to get that upstairs space. So I'm proposing that we allow a bit taller for the accessory dwellings, or these accessory buildings. That would allow you to basically build shell now and.
So, yeah, you're saying it's allowed, it goes an accessory dwelling.
You're building it, and you can go way up.
But if it's an accessory building.
But since it's an empty shell, I can't.
You can't actually go way up on a V D unless.
Well, not way up, I mean, up to like whatever eighteen or whatever, like twenty.
It's however high the structure is.
Kyle, currently in the residential district, the footnote for the height of detached structure. Um, it's fourteen feet max, but the footnote is the maximum height of the detached accessory structure. A dwelling in detached accessory, oh, that's accessory dwelling.
Yeah. There's a little, right, so there's a little disconnect.
Oh, you want, so. I remember we had this conversation in the subcommittee. If we, if we automatically allow it without it being coming in port at the same time. I I have no, as code in those things, have no. Uh, stick to ensure that somebody comes back and gets their permit.
Sure, because they're gonna have to get a billing permit to do this thing, they're gonna start pulling power on it, I mean, it maybe could be a little bit harder, and I appreciate it, but. The reality is, a lot of people are just gonna be able to afford this shell, they wanna do it once and not tear this roof off a second time. We should at least give them enough to get some kind of space up top.
So the thing that we have to remember, and somebody can propose the ADU, and it. They'll have to construct it all at the same time.
That's the thing of my question, can you get the ADU approved and then finish it out later?
Yeah. Because the only thing that you need as far as the ADU is to, it be demonstrated that it's able to exceed the maximum square footage. That's allowed in in whichever of the different zones.
So I just wanna spell it out, and this, like, sometimes I find it like I ask something like a child, it's the best thing. If I wanna build the ADU, that's the exact ADU that Kyle's describing. An apartment on top of the garage. But I wanna get it approved upfront. And then only build the garage, because I want the money to build the garage.
Finishing the garage.
To finish, to finish, to only finish the interior of the garage. Is there any limit on when I can come back and finish the apartment?
I don't think so, it's not.
As long as you've pulled the first permit.
Yeah, I don't know how you would.
And then the space of the time, then you should be able to do it, and I also would like to back up to Michelle in that. A lot of people will pull permits, but there will be somebody who will not.
Why?
And then. Then you don't have the, and you've created these rules for ADUs for reasons. And so by, you you're you're setting yourself up for. The, a bad actor, and sometimes with planning, you plan for the best of people. But with zoning, you zone for bad actors, for the worst. And I I understand what you're saying, Kyle, in terms of saving somebody money, but I think the, then the process is. For them to pull the permit for the ADU and only finish. The part of it that they can't afford at the time, and then may, I know that good records are kept.
You you could, but I mean, everybody's gonna know the rent out of the apartment that just finished without a permit, I mean, people are gonna figure this out. Anyway, I don't know, but I'll bring up, I'll bring up one opposing kind of thing to consider, is that if you built that detached garage. With a breezeway, now all of a sudden, you can build that thing empty as you want, as tall as you want, and then you could finish it in the future without you knowing. So, but the fact that there's a little roof connector, all of a sudden, it's okay, so I'm I'm just saying, there's a lot of like conflicting messages when you get into like. And it's zoning, so it's not simple, but it would seem to mean that you should allow a little bit more height with these detached buildings.
So that's all you want, is to leave out the AD.
I think, yeah, eighteen feet would be enough.
Accessory dwellings can go to eighteen feet.
And if you look at some of, if you go down some of the old alleys in town, you notice these skinnier, taller, little barn structures, they're quite charming. When you get it fourteen, there's a two-car with a low pitch roof on it, fine, but it's not a great building type.
Oh, my God.
It's a good.
I'm not good at estimating, like, I'll tell you, I I'm trying to figure out what that looks like. Like, how tall would you estimate mine to be?
I don't know, garage, you've probably got.
I've got it, and there's like money in.
At the plate, and then you're going up, you know, across twelve feet and a half pitch, and if you're going to six, you're right there, you know.
Well, we measure to the midpoint, right?
I think you did, although I think.
Yeah, I'm a peeker, right?
But, yeah, it's.
Because I could definitely get an apartment upstairs in my garage, I don't have the money to do it, I'm not gonna do it.
So, all right, so, so that would be kind of a, um. Right now, you can do it, but you just have to file it as an ADU. And not maybe not complete it right away.
Well, with that, the possibility.
But but you, would you be proposing to raise it to eighteen feet? Accessory buildings? Other thoughts, thoughts, thoughts?
Maybe you don't want too much.
For, this would be for detached accessory building, so.
Not a breezeway.
Right, right, with no breezeway, so, any of our garages, I mean, I, yeah.
So, I mean, for what Kyle's proposing, why can't you be the same as the ADU, as as the ADU would do? It's usually the accessory dwelling, accessory buildings. Could be the height of the principal building or the maximum height in zoning district for Shepherd's West, and that's what you're doing for industrial buildings.
That could get real.
Or, but, yeah, I don't know if I feel comfortable with that, but I would, I mean, just a, for instance, I'm just throwing it out there, Ann Arbor is twenty-one feet for any accessory building, but Kansha, yes, it's twenty-one feet. To the midpoint of the elevation, I mean, we, it doesn't seem to be an issue there, again, not that we have to do what Ann Arbor does, but it, so that's why, again, we're. It seems reasonable, but um, again, this is something that's kind of coming up at the last minute, so I don't know how comfortable the commission is with change, I mean, which. I'm on the fence about this, so, again, if we can do it. Any other additional?
I didn't realize that you could file it as an ADU and just not build it that way, yeah, and then do it someday, you got your zone approval.
Correct.
Which is good to have.
So, okay, so if it's not necessarily a huge, right, but I agree, that's a valid point, Kyle, for bringing that up, so, um, other thoughts?
Karen, well, but the setback's the same for garage, I thought garages were three feet and late use or five.
Yes.
Okay, so there's your.
Well, actually, yeah, Megan?
I have just the idea of a motion on the floor, and so it's whether.
Well, that's true, right, exactly, I'll I'll.
This motion is, this motion is completely changeable.
To Mr. Carter, it's a change, but, okay.
And to be honest, like, the opinions of Kyle and Karen got are more to be, because they put N one, they put more work into it.
No, that's that's fair.
Hey, I correct, it's not being modest.
Karen's, Karen's point is, this is a all apples to apples.
Yep.
If it's a detached structure, um, with an ADU, it's gotta be five feet from the boundary line. If it's a, um, if it's just. The detached structure and no ADU, it can be three feet, so it really, it it it. It behooves somebody, if they want to do an ADU, to come in, um, and get their approval for it. So that its placement meets the. So that its placement meets the ordinance, whereas, um, if it, if it, if they don't wanna do it that way, then it always just leaves those. The detached. And coming for variances is a problem.
Yeah, I forgot about the setback change. That.
That's important.
Yeah, no, that, that's important. So I, I think with, with that, and, I mean, so no, it's a good point, Kyle, but I think, I feel reasonably if they can file it that way and not build it right away. Yeah, what's the difference of that? Okay, so, are you good, Kyle's, or this, okay?
Yeah.
Alright, so.
It's five feet, and we'll keep the fourteen foot for the.
For the other ones?
Mm-hmm.
Yep, for this, okay. Um, so, having, any additional thoughts? This, this may be, if it's, if the motion does pass, this would be the last time, we would see this. Until another ten years or five years or wherever.
Until it needs a tweak.
Until it needs a tweak.
So we get done with the subway or are you planning?
Except for. Yes, well, exactly. I mean, right, but, but as I, we've got it intact right now, this is, this is the. Forward, so, um, okay, so, what's your thoughts?
You go.
No.
I was just gonna ask for clarification.
Yeah.
Oh, so, um, I mean, I wrote down what you said, that the, it shall not be approved, we should discuss each before approval, but I need to know. I mean, is that gonna be, is this gonna be a new motion?
She wants to make sure you have all.
We're gonna change, we're gonna change the motion, and I'm gonna summarize the whole thing.
Okay.
Hopefully that will.
So this first one just goes away?
No.
You have to vote it out.
Friendly amendment.
It's a friendly.
So, Karen, I would propose a friendly amendment. And under the friendly amendment, um. On points one through nine, all will change to shall, except for five and nine, which we've remained shall not. So let's just take a second and review that. Everything changes to shall, except five and nine. If anyone thinks something wrong about that.
Well, that's. Recommend to the city council, true.
Okay, so everybody clear on this? So that's my friendly amendment. Do you second Karen?
Awesome.
Okay. Did you have a question, no?
No, I was just gonna say, I really liked how that was done, because it helped everybody kind of go through everything to make sure.
Yes. Introducing a motion, thank you.
I would make it two.
Well, that's perfect. I'm still gonna do this. Okay, yes. Okay.
Let's call them.
Alright, we'll call a vote, please.
Uh, Roberts.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Hardy.
Yes.
Hubbard.
Yes.
Peyton.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes. Okay, it was forward for now, thank you. And thank, thank you all for your tremendous amount of input and patience in the whole process. And we have another opportunity to comment. So, but right now, we're moving to pre-race session presentation. We have an. We, item six, reports of officers. I have no report tonight. Anything the county commissioners wanna share?
Oh, I'm going to Barcelona.
Oh, that's, that's. Great, I'm glad you have urban planning right there. You stroll along the, we got the super block. Alright, wait, we still got other business, but that's awesome. Um, okay, so.
Megan, I gotta tell you, I love CBA, we didn't meet. Wait, someone talking?
Okay, now you're talking, yes.
CBA did meet about a various, uh, house on, um, Broad Street. It was, uh, Mr., um, I know the guy, I can't think of his name right now, you guys got me all stroked up.
All woozy.
Yeah, 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 you know, uh, and it had to do with, with, uh, he wanted to, um, extend his garage six and a half feet one direction. And it was tabled because the neighbors complained about that, so the idea is that he would extend it six feet, six and a half feet the other direction. He's going back with that the next one.
He did get approved for the.
He did get?
Yes, he's approved for the variance with the condition that it's extended in the front, not.
So he doesn't act on that.
No.
Okay.
Alright, good.
Interesting, huh? Okay, thank you, chat.
Welcome. Is there a comment or? Yeah, my comment is that they like feeding us, that we were too slow, we were too slow, we were too slow. The Broward project, I'm just ran our road, but nobody's even out there working on it.
Are they gonna get the sidewalk open soon?
Oh, that's the other project.
Yeah, that's, that's how I know, this, the sidewalk's just been closed for weeks now.
Yeah.
But where the.
Only too slow, yeah, thank you, and then the other project.
Yeah.
Um, okay, sorry, why?
Two quick things, um, we had someone come in and give us a presentation about, um, some next steps for the border-to-border trail coming over Mill Creek. Using the Bell Road Bridge or connect, or constructing a new bridge. The Bell Road Bridge would be cheaper, actually, according to the.
Really?
Wow.
Projections, and so it seems like council was really in favor of using the old one as, you know, a piece of history and cheaper. And there's a, or a, a sometimes article, if you wanna read out about it. Then also, um. Everybody, I wanted to let everybody know that on the thirteenth of this month, which is what, next Wednesday, Tuesday, whatever, so that's not my phone.
Thursday.
Thursday, next Thursday. There is gonna be a public meeting about the fire station, um, and looking at the two proposals that we have. And talking about, about language and getting feedback. We're probably, it's gonna be here.
Will it be a Zoom meeting?
Uh, yes, it will also be a Zoom meeting. It's a. I'll be here.
Wasn't it in the last news? There was no last email update date, I think.
Yeah, it definitely was.
From Justin.
I'm amazed that you didn't follow up.
That's what they said.
That's why I'm floored that that's.
They didn't look at it in detail.
Well, that's what I was gonna say, I saw the print like five years ago.
If you put in a bridge that hundred feet long versus just plopping that little bridge in there.
Sure, but what's.
It's, it was, the way that I remember it was explained is, the, there would be boardwalk that had to meet the Bell River, Bell River Bridge. And that was cheaper than what it would cost to do.
Oh.
A modern bridge that would span the entire.
Yeah, but why not put in a modern bridge, the same length as a little, oh, where'd you put the board?
Yeah, like the rest. Anyway, okay, anyway.
It's at six PM. Also, they had like bridge people that do this all across the country looking up.
Okay, at six PM, this is for the fire.
Yes, fire station, six PM here, Thursday, October thirteenth.
For the record, on the fire station, my fifteen-year-old said to me, Dad, am I gonna come back here as an adult in my house and there's still gonna be debate with the.
No.
To, to gift councilware props. They have been moving forward, um, although it's still a small incremental approach each month. If there's more movement.
Now.
In this year than there has been in the previous twenty.
I would say that without question. I'll be sure, yes. Without question, there's been more.
Give him Sean's phone number, let him get your hook up.
Okay. Or you failed. Okay, so, uh, committee reports, we got that. Anything else, Ma?
That's it.
Thank you, Ma. Um, anything from you other than your, your packet?
Nothing other than what's in my hand.
Are you excited? Any questions from Michelle? You could, yes, if you needed a part of this.
Okay, I presume on behalf of everybody, move to adjourn.
Yes, well, or, or we'll be there in like five minutes, but you can go ahead now if you want. But, but we're not quite done yet, Eric, what, you have an opportunity? Um, okay, so, uh, committee developing report, we're flipping over here. There we go. Citizens wishing to address the commission. Citizens wishing to address the commission. You don't have to stand, but do say your name again for our official record, sorry.
Jim Harger, working by the Hudson Street.
Okay, thank you.
Texter Min for A130. Um, two quick comments. First, I am disappointed that no one on the commission said anything. About what I consider to be my major point, which was the relationship between. I'm zoning, you're implementing smart growth and environmental issues stretched to climate change, if you wanna do that, but it's huge, it's principal. Then, I'm a senior policy advisor for climate, and this stuff came out of that. That's why we have this kind of zoning proposal. So to have no conversation about that, and I, I guess I was disappointed that nobody acknowledged that core element of what I offered out. You went right into the motion, in ban. I can understand that you wouldn't wanna put all this work on hold. Again. I would appreciate at least some acknowledgement of that. Big help. Second thing is that I spent a lot of time talking about houses on Second Street between Inverness and. I recognize that the public participation comment is done. I think it would be helpful if you had some way, if you got someone, I could already cross the street from that. I'm looking at the map for, I know all the people in all of those places. I know that there are five lots that are on that lot. Four of them have Second Street addresses, and one of them has an Inverness address, because it's a single-family house from one, okay? So five, three of them are rentals. Two of them look like houses, and they've been converted into multi. And one of them is a food plant. The other two are single-family. Michelle, when I was talking to you about this issue, I think in a row, I appreciate that you put this on in there. I think a lot of it was because of what, the conversation I had with you. I think you may have misunderstood what I said.
Okay.
I was just trying to provide that information because of possible zoning inconsistencies that would result. You guys are focused on this study. Plan can go that far, and can include some of those considerations. I can tell you myself, is if you're looking at form-based zoning, there, there's really a pretty simple answer to that, chong. Because the forms of two of them, places are houses, you know, they're, they're all block, that's. The place down by there, that, that's where the, that's where the mess is. And I don't see a lot of consistency in conversations about that, including just what's there. You got two lots there that you're redesignating as I-1 that are vacant. There's, they're vacant. One belongs to Elastizelle. I talked to them today.
Elastizelle is VC, it's not I-1.
Elastizelle Building is VC, but they own a property that is right across from that, that used to have a house on it. I, I got their permission to play soccer there with my kid, okay? That vacant place is now being designated I-1.
Um, no, I don't think so. I'll, I'll go back and ask.
Okay, okay, well, that's what I mean. There's confusion about all of this. In the meantime, before you get this plan done, if things come in, what is the context under which the decision-making is gonna be made? Uh, that's, that's, it scares me. And I sure as heck would like to see some of real language that puts some guidance on what we're looking for. Out of, out of that study, in terms of the consistency with your principles for the village, I'll stop.
Oh, thank, thank you. Um, okay, all, all, all business, um, no business, new business, none? Proposed business for Monday, November seventh?
You probably are wondering why the Millennium Place isn't on here, like it was.
Oh, yeah, like it was previously.
You decided to just keep it apart.
Wow, okay.
It'll just stay apart until right now.
Okay, um, question about that, okay. Power up that, item eleven, so we have citizens wishing to address the commission again. You know, I didn't even ask previously if we had anybody online, so I hope not.
No.
The last time, okay. Do we have anybody right now? Seeing them, okay. Um, do we have motion to adjourn? Okay, sorry, so I also raised your hand first, chat, please, for, alright, so far, alright, meaning is adjourned. Thank you, that was one of our longer ones.